Business meeting. It's wonderful to see everyone here in person, as spread out as we may be. It's great to be back together. It's time to call this meeting to order. Could we call the roll, please? Oh, wait. Before we call the roll, we have something wonderful. We have Pastor Edinson Diarco here to actually lift us up in prayer before we begin. Please come on up and let's stand for the prayer and then we'll turn for the pledge, and then we'll do the roll call.
Let us pray. My Lord, thank you for this day. And today we'd like to say thank you for our community. We pray for our city and for this meeting for wisdom and guidance. We pray for our nurses and doctors and the hospital. And thank you so much for being present in this difficult time in our families, in our communities. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, let's take the roll.
Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Chance?
Here.
Councilmember Bradburn? Councilmember Stricula?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gilb? Councilmember Hunter Law? Mayor Grossman?
Here. Thank you, Lisa. Councilmember Hunter Law sends his regrets. He is delivering his son to the Army tonight. He reports for his first Call of Duty in Columbus, Ohio. So he regrets not being here with us, but we thank Lou Hunter Law for his service and wish him all the best in the world. I imagine he's gonna have very short hair by tomorrow. He's just graduated from high school and joining the Army. Okay, I would like to add a note here before we get going and adopt the minutes. I'm gonna offer a break after item 22 on our agenda, which is committee reports, since we have a lengthy, a lengthy business portion to take care of. Okay. Item number five, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the June 8 council meeting.
Is there a move?
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, it's time for the City Managers' Report. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, ma'am. I have just a couple of items to report on. First of all, this is our first meeting following the July 4 holiday, and while we weren't able to have our typical Red Rhythm Boom event, the city did make efforts to have some virtual programming available. And then folks that participated in that were invited to upload their photos. Over 2,500 community members participated in those events. 22 of those residents were awarded with a $50 Come Together Mason gift card to some of the local participating businesses. I think what Kurt has queued up is a, just a brief video with some of the highlights of, of those photo submissions. We practiced earlier today and it all worked. While Kurt's working on that, speaking of the Come Together gift card program, that continues to be rolled out, both as an opportunity for residents and others to purchase gift cards individually, as well as part of the city's recovery programs. And this information is a little bit dated now, but as of last week, I think midweek, about 9,400 gift cards had been sent from the city or purchased by community members. Tell me if I should stop, Kurt? Okay, Kurt's ready to roll. I can see some of the participants that celebrated the holiday at home with decorating their pets or their sidewalks. I think you may have noticed up there, my personal favorite was one that the, the submittal came in, and you may have seen a photo of a little bowl of sidewalk chalk in it, and the gentleman wrote in with it saying, "My wife told me to go get a picture of the sidewalk chalk." And here it is. He followed through literally. So thanks for everyone for participating in that. As I mentioned, several folks were able to get Come Together Mason gift cards. As part of that, 9,400 of those between the city and private individuals have been purchased so far. 1,500 of them have been redeemed, a total value of nearly $50,000 that has gone to local businesses. As I said, those are dated, and I expect as the sewer portion of our program ramps up, that number will grow. There are currently 73 businesses that are participating in that program, so those gift cards are redeemable at 73 local businesses. And there's another 18 businesses that have signed up and may have already, you know, finished their transactions or finalized that. Speaking of Small Business Recovery Program, several, the work continues on that, but the bulk of the dollars have now been distributed through those programs. The, sorry, I lost my place here. From the, the Small Business Service Agreement and Forgivable Loan Program, so far, most 61 small businesses have completed all the paperwork, were in good standing, and have received $417,500. The Business Recovery Team, and I'm particularly proud of this, we often talk about instant command with Red Rhythm Boom, how that involves folks across departments and across different professions. This year, the Business Recovery Team serves that same purpose. We have folks from police, fire, public works, and they have reached out individually to businesses, to help businesses that maybe have questions or working through the paperwork they need to submit. That work continues. As I mentioned, the bulk of that has gone out. The remains in businesses that are finalizing some of their compliance items and finishing the paperwork. I expect by our next meeting to have a full report on all of those programs as far as wrapping that up. I am planning to be out of the office for some days during the month of July and August, and it would be appropriate for council to appoint someone as an acting city manager in my absence. So I would recommend appointing Jennifer Heft as the acting city manager when appropriate. That would take a motion and a vote.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Two final items. Just a reminder, and this may be the longest year ever for issuing this reminder, but city tax returns are due Wednesday, this Wednesday, July 15, as a result of adjustments to federal and state tax due dates. Residents, I think increasingly this year have taken advantage of the city's webpage where their taxes can be calculated, as well as filed online through the website. It's imaginemason.org, clicking on Individual or Businesses next to the Tax Information icon. They can also be dropped off here at the Municipal Center during office hours Monday through Friday. Final item, I do have a liquor permit. This is for Empanadas Aki LLC, doing business as Aki Cafe. It is for a D5, which is beerless liquor for on-premises consumption only. Beer and wine for on-premises and off-premises in original sealed containers until 2:30 a.m. Council can request a hearing or not request a hearing and do that via motion.
I'll make the motion not to request a hearing.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay.
That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
May I add something to the agenda, if I could, please?
Yes.
I'm not sure when the proper time to do it, if I was supposed to do it before Managers' meeting or after, but if we could add, I've noticed that the recognition of visitors, which used to be before the meeting as well as after the meeting, we've reduced it now just to after the meeting. And I think it's quite lengthy sometimes for individuals who have something short that they want to say to have to sit through the entire meeting to be able to speak. So I don't know why it's been left off the last couple meetings, but I would like to put it back on the agenda, actually, item number seven. And then I would like to see it on there going forward as well. I think it's just really important, you know, we are the voice and we are the vote of our residents, and if we don't know how they feel or, or what they're thinking, we can't, we can't do our job properly as council members. So if we can get them back up here and communicating with us, I, I would appreciate that.
Okay. We did put it down at the bottom this time because we had a lengthy agenda. For the Zoom meetings, it, it worked much better to have it one time during the meetings. And because we have such a lengthy meeting, I thought it best tonight, and I had a feeling that we might have some hot button issues come up this evening, and so I asked the city manager if we could place that recognition of visitors after we get our business done so that we can get through that. I think we can get through it relatively quickly. So I, if you want to make a motion to add another recognition of visitors, you certainly may, and we'll need a second, and we'll call the roll.
I'd like to make a motion to add recognition of visitors to item number seven on the list.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
All right, item seven is now recognition of visitors. And we need to take a moment, council, to set the rules. Do we want to have someone make a motion to set a time limit?
We never have before, right?
We have with the Zoom format. I just wanted to check in.
Yep.
All right, so rules are, as we normally do that, all right. If there's someone that would like to approach the podium, please remember you need to state your name and address, and you may tell us what's on your mind.
Glenn Garvin, 4974 Lava Court, Mason. Good evening. Thanks for the time and appreciate being able to go early in this. There was a time when, when people used to work together for a common good. It wasn't so much based on political gain or, and, and certainly not in, in the way it is today with, with the left and the right. It was based on common decency. It consisted of a give and take and compromise for leadership and for the good of the people. Somehow, our world's devolved into, into this versus, an us versus them mentality. We see that on a national stage, but I was shocked to see how much this is occurring in, just here in Mason and in the members of this council. There's a clear divide with abuse of power coming from the four of people on this council that have a privilege of power. That's not leadership. Leadership is influence, not flexing political muscle. This council starts with prayers and quote scripture, but the four who have the power take actions that are hypocritical and contrary to the God they profess to have allegiance towards. Mason should, Mason should be a leader for other cities to follow. We should be setting the example, and we should be the envy of other cities throughout the state. We have the resources, we have the tax base, we have the community to support it, yet we become a laughingstock to other communities. Why? Because our leadership doesn't believe in servant leadership. They believe in the art of war. Instead of working together in a time of crisis, we saw nothing but political posturing, name-calling, misrepresentation of facts, and a complete lack of leadership. What's worse is the person whose main responsibility is to lead this group as a team is the main instigator of division. The definition of leadership is the act of guiding a team towards a common goal through influence. A common characteristic of a great leader is taking the blame for the failures of a team and giving credit to the team for its successes. We have seen the exact opposite from our mayor. In fact, during this, many of your closing arguments, mayor, you have instead attempted to cast blame on the three council members who haven't bowed down to your demands for obedience. And of course, trying to take credit for it whenever you can. We've also seen that, in my opinion, is a coordinated, behind-the-scenes effort by Mayor Grossman, Vice Mayor Gilb, council members Bradburn and Hunter Law, to shut down meetings by quickly making a motion to end a meeting before the other members could even begin to ask questions regarding an ordinance that was presented without any information to its intended purpose. This was the same ordinance that was presented at a prior council meeting where there was a motion made to waive a second reading. When confronted about ordinance 202046, suddenly this was just a placeholder for other ideas and wasn't meant to actually do anything else. Why would you then attempt to push it through if it hadn't been through committee already and wasn't ready? To date, there's been many questions asked of the so-called Gang of Four, Grossman, Gilb, Hunter Law, and Bradburn, and they've been met with silence. Councilmember Bradburn, I have asked on several occasions, and will do so once again today, did you write by yourself your statement that was read at the special council meeting on April 23rd? Or did you receive input, editing, or feedback in any other way from the council members or mayor?
I wrote it myself. I did not receive any feedback. I had a lot of input from the community, especially those that spoke at the Zoom meetings.
I appreciate your answer finally for, for that, Councilmember Bradburn. I have a hard time believing it, but I appreciate you actually answering the question for the first time. Scoff if you will, but that's what my opinion is. Or can you explain to me about pulling police, police records on a previous candidate or for a council, or how those records mysteriously ended up in the hands of the council and the candidates?
Yes, I did go ahead and pull those public records, and public records are exactly that, public records.
Okay, and, and did you do anything with those? This wasn't meant to be a give and take, but I appreciate your, your, your feedback on this.
I'm honest.
Did you send those to the other council members?
No.
They just somehow made it out to the other council members?
I passed them out to a number of people. What those people did with it, I do not know.
Thank you. Mayor, we've seen you claim to be Republican and conservative on numerous occasions, conservative on numerous occasions. But I would, I would confront you with potentially that, the definition of a rhino, Republican in name only, when your actions don't follow your words. As an example, your complete and purposeful mischaracterization of my, mischaracterization, mischaracterization of my words in an attempt to discredit me, were clear to anyone listening, that you fictitiously made up something that I did not say. So you could claim to be a victim and then acted in, in some way that I was misogynistic to you. Can anyone ever disagree with you without being misogynistic? I certainly wasn't. You claimed that I said something that I didn't and then would not apologize for it.
Would you like for me to address that now or later?
Sure, you can address that now.
All right, Mr. Garvin, how did you think I was supposed to interpret a video commentary that you made about our meetings? When you said things like, Mayor Grossman seems to get help from people while she's on her bathroom break or in the bathroom, and she comes back from her bathroom break with her lips loaded and a game plan? And I'm pretty sure "lips loaded and a game plan" is a direct quote. So explain to me how I, as the mayor, am supposed to interpret your comments. Was I supposed to assume I was in a basketball huddle at a basketball game, and that's how male coaches come out after a basketball huddle timeout with a lips loaded and a game plan kind of scenario? Mr., Mr. Garvin, I'm not claiming victim status. In fact, I'm probably one of the craziest people that comes in here to work day after day, after being treated with abusive language like that. So I think the smarter thing to do for you as a politician is to apologize and say, "Ma'am, I understand why you may have interpreted that way," and then tell me what you really meant. Because I really don't appreciate having my bathroom habits.
Not only am I not a politician, not only am I not a politician, that you, your words when you came, when you addressed this to the city council publicly, was that I commented on your lipstick.
Sir, you said...
Now, listen, now, listen. You said, you said, "I commented on your lipstick," and how I would treat other women in my life because of that, because of that, that had nothing to do, and you knew it because then moments later, you read from the script of my exact quote. So lipstick was a misogynistic term where you were trying to mischaracterize what I was saying.
Sir, I apologize if you feel that I mischaracterized your comments about me coming out of the bathroom with lips loaded and a game plan.
You said lipstick, not lips loaded. You...
Sir...
...just quoted me purposefully.
I mentioned that you commented on my lipstick. Now, could we move on to your next point?
Did I comment on your lipstick?
This is inappropriate. This is not an effective dialogue.
You asked, now, I'm asking you, did I comment on your lipstick?
Yes.
I did not.
That's how I interpret it. If you didn't say the word lipstick, that's fine.
I commented.
But you said lips loaded and a game plan when I leave the bathroom. That is not something that I felt was an appropriate workplace commentary to make about me. Now, what's your next question?
To the four of you, can you explain how the four of you came into a meeting with prepared statements on a topic that you hadn't proposed to council? Can you explain why the other three members of the council were stunned to find out that Mike Gilb was rescinding his willingness to become mayor? Can any of you explain that Councilmember Hunter Law was not only prepared but incredibly anxious to make a motion to have Councilmember Grossman chair the meeting on December 1st? Can any of you even begin to understand why we, the citizens of Mason, are pissed off by this behavior?
Okay, let's stop right there. Let's answer some of those questions so that we can go through. Let's talk about the prepared statements. Now, you do realize that I think it was, we met on March 28th, March 30th, I think, and April 1st, which is the meeting you're talking about where the motion to table ordinance 46 was passed, 4 to 3. Now, you remember that on those first two occasions, Councilmember Gilb was absent. And you may remember in the April 1 meeting that Councilmember Gilb informed us that he saw both of those meetings, which were livestreamed and recorded on icrc.tv.com. We had already failed to pass a motion to table ordinance 43, 3 to 3. He would have been aware, coming into the April 1 meeting, what that divide was, but it was his right and his judgment and his prerogative to vote to table it or to not table it. And it is not inappropriate for anyone to bring prepared statements to meetings. I bring them all the time. In fact, I have some to share today. All right, I think we talked about the tabling motion. What was the next question?
I believe you addressed that, however, the question, the question...
We had prepared, say, oh, Mayor, uh, May, uh, sorry, excuse me, December 1, the Swearing Inn of Council, the organizational meeting. Do you know if any...
Why don't you just talk over me, mayor, and, and move past that? The prepared statements reference things that happened in the executive session, that you would only have known that were going to happen in the executive session if you guys had prepared and spoke to the, to them previously.
Sir, that is really fascinating.
Now, let me finish before you interrupt again. You're talking over me both times and when you've, when you've interrupted me at these, at this case. You guys talked about, you guys, I presume you guys talked about this, because each of your written statements referenced a unified game plan that you wouldn't have known coming into the meeting was going to be the case until then, unless you had coordinated that effort prior. So that's the question I'm asking, not that, not that you prepared a statement. There's nothing wrong with preparing a statement, but when that statement references things that you would only know if you were coordinating an effort between you, that's the problem.
Okay, let me address that. First of all, we may not be in executive session to discuss whether or not to table an ordinance. That would be illegal, totally inappropriate. Second of all, it troubles me very much that you're claiming that we spoke about things in executive session and then I had prepared statements about it. If you have any idea of what we spoke about in executive session?
I do not.
You need to come and tell me.
And not only am I not saying that, not only am I not saying that, I, I wouldn't know what happened in executive session.
Oh, really?
However, what I do know, what I do know is that your statements reference things that you came back and talked about during the meeting that you wouldn't have known previously if you didn't coordinate, not necessarily what happened in executive session, but what had happened leading up to that and including the executive session. I wouldn't know.
Sir, I'm inclined to believe that you may have been informed of some of our discussion in executive session, and that troubles me very much.
I have, I, I can, I would swear on a stack of Bibles that I have no idea what happened in your executive session. I would have no way of knowing that, and I don't care. And, and despite your facial expressions, which are condescending, I do not, and I don't, I don't...
No condescending, I'm just saying it, it's very troublesome if you are commenting that you know things about executive session.
It's very troublesome that you've lied about me publicly as well, so, anyway.
All right, what's your next question? I think we covered those bases.
Another question we're gonna come up with, right?
Oh, you talked about the organizational meeting on December 1st. We followed all of the rules in that meeting. I know that I did. When we first began the meeting, we had no chair. Robert's Rules requires that when the chair and vice chair are missing from the body, someone from the body makes a motion to appoint a chair for that meeting. That's what occurred. I think maybe Vice Mayor Gilb made that appointment. Now, I remember some of the dialogue during that meeting and some of the commentary about why someone might change his opinion and shift to support me as mayor. I remember commentary from Councilmember Nelson that was particularly dark, and Councilmember Chance, who mentioned that he had at least five private meetings with Councilmember Gilb and thought that they had it, had it all decided. And he was really surprised that Mike Gilb must have changed his mind, or Vice Mayor Gilb. I wasn't privy to any of those meetings. I wasn't invited. I wasn't included in any discussions with Councilmember Chance about who he thought should be mayor. In fact, I invited him to discuss that with me, and he texted me back saying we had nothing to talk about.
I'll read that. I'll read that text. I can bring it up right now, so. Since you brought up my name, I do have a question. Well, first of all, you're talking about the chair of the organization meeting.
Yes, and that was...
Has that ever happened prior to, in our history, Mason?
Yes.
It has?
Yes, when I was here, I know in my first term, Mayor, Mayor Kidd and...
Every single time.
Yes, and Robert's Rules does explain that, but we did have a real-life experience with that. Mayor Kidd and Vice Mayor Barry Spath were absent on the same occasion, and as I recall, maybe it was Don Prince, I don't know, but he appointed Sharp, he made a motion, and we ended up selecting Sharp Helfrey to chair the meeting. It was a very quick meeting that we had. And I can't tell you the date on that, but that has happened. And you guys acted as if we were violating, we were actually following them.
It's never happened.
I've asked that question.
Is it against the rules or not?
I don't believe it's against the rules, but it's shady, and you know it's shady.
It was appropriate. And you need to wait to acknowledge it here.
First of all, Mr. Gilb, how many times did we meet? And you discussed wanting to be mayor? If we're gonna talk about it, let's talk about it.
Certainly, we're in discussions about who was gonna be mayor, and we...
How many times?
We certainly had a number of meetings.
Six?
I, I don't recall an exact number, but we certainly had a number, number of occasions. But certainly, when it came down to the point of actually electing a mayor, we made the decision that, that we were gonna support...
Sure. And I'll read your, I'll read your text. It says, "I have five votes for mayor. Mike has five votes for vice mayor. I'd like to discuss that with you." And I just said, "Well, no need to chat then. Sounds like you have it worked out."
That's it. You could have called me.
What's that?
You know my number. If you were upset and you want, you acted so shocked.
You had it all figured out.
Okay, now, listen. This is why I wanted to do recognition of visitors at the end.
Why?
Because we need, we are holding other people who are waiting for city business hostage, and we're not getting through this. This is, this is disorderly. I want to be able to address your concerns.
Mayor, you asked me if you wanted to respond, and I would have continued to read, but now it's getting disorderly. I'm allowing you the opportunity to respond.
Sir, it's getting disorderly, and I'm redirecting us to get back on track. Do you have any more questions that we have not addressed?
Yes. To, to many, to many of us, it appears the four of you are working together to do one thing, to further your own political agendas and careers. I want to remind you that your job is to represent the citizens of Mason, all of them, that's the TJ, and to do what is best interest of this city. That is why you were elected, and that is why, what we demand of you. If you are unable to fulfill that requirement, then you should vacate your position, because I believe that some of you are not acting in the best interest of the city, but for your own political careers. Mayor, I know you'll find some way to twist this like you do with so many of the other words and the lack of apology, to somehow make this either my fault or the other three council members who sometimes disagree with you. That's what you do. However, I want to be very clear. The four of you are solely responsible for the city's anger and outrage about how you guys have behaved as a city council and not in the direct interest of the people of Mason. There was absolutely nothing that the three members of this council did to earn any disgust. Are they perfect? Absolutely not. But it is evident that their efforts have been in the interest of the city members, not for their own political careers like some of you had. You four are responsible, and I'm here speaking in an effort to hold you accountable for your actions, for the things that you have done, for what I believe is a behind-the-scenes procedures to, or behind-the-scenes coordination to get your own agendas pushed through and what you want done. And I appreciate your time in going through all those questions.
Mr. Garvin, could I ask a follow-up question? What didn't get done specifically that you thought needed to get done legislatively?
I, I would go back to 2020, 202046, when we go back to the original, the original proposal made by Councilmember Stricula, who, which was shot down, from what I understand is mostly from a lack of information or questions about it. And then 202046 was tried to rush through without any details. So the hypocrisy of those two things, I can't reconcile, and... And, and Mayor, those, those are, to watch council members Bradburn and Stricula do your bidding, I'm sorry, council members Bradburn and honor law do your bidding to read statements on their behalf, it is troublesome to me.
Okay. So because you have decided that there's a gang of four, and because you have decided that, um, other people are doing my bidding, you've decided that that's true, it sounds like.
You can address 2040, then how does 46 pass?
But I wanna, I wanna comment on ordinance 43. That was a proposal to donate $500,000 to the Maide Chamber Community Development Corporation to redistribute grants to small businesses for small business recovery with an anonymous selection committee, that's a quote, and quote, "sole discretion over the allocation of funds," end quote. We listened to council member Stricula's proposal. We talked for hours and hours and hours on end, and we listened to the community. Many, many people signed petition. We got a lot of feedback from community members and from people from the Chamber of Commerce. And sir, we not only came up with small business recovery efforts that included $500,000, we expanded it. We almost ended up doing five times that much.
Mayor, I understand you're taking credit for this, but 40, you're not, you're not addressing my question of what I said, 46 passed without any background.
Forty-six.
You guys tried to rush it through with approval from the four members without any details behind that. How can you justify that you would pass that when you said that Stricula's didn't have enough details in it, but 46 had zero details?
Forty-six, we were very transparent about that. We wanted time to come up with programming that the city could control.
To wait and do that in committee? Why did that have to be done in committee?
Because we had to go through a process which kept getting interrupted by repeated meetings.
That process would not get approved. If you processed that in 46 versus doing it in committee and then taking a full proposal into committee would be the proper way to do that process.
I'll just read you my statement. If you guys want to just, I can do that. Okay, well, listen, I have a comparison chart I can share with you later that I kinda came up with, comparing the original proposal with what we actually did. We adopted ordinances 51 and 52. We also adopted 43 as amended, budgeting $160,000 in gift cards with the CDC.
Because Vice Mayor Gilb didn't want to go on record of being against a vote for something.
Sir, you are impugning motive.
He said it in council member. I'm not impugning anything. He said that in the meeting. I don't want to go on record against this. I'm not, don't accuse me of saying something.
So you're furious because we would not donate.
I'm not furious. You just accused me of impugning motive, which you have done.
Sir, you're angry, you're raising your voice, you're being very confrontational today. You're confronting us for not giving $500,000 to this community development corporation of the Maide Chamber.
You just told me I'm impugning motive when I'm quoting what Vice Mayor Gilb said in a court of council members.
Okay, sir, I did not realize that was a quote. Hang on. You're confronting us, and you're angry because we did not donate $500,000 of public funds to the Maide Chamber CDC to redistribute for small business recovery with an anonymous selection committee and sole discretion over the allocation of funds, with the proviso that they agree to a Pay It Forward program. If they're able, they would return the money when they got on their feet back to the CDC. There were four members of this council that believed that wasn't the best way to use public funds for small business recovery efforts. Now, there were criteria in ordinance 43 as originally proposed. However, it lacked front-end and back-end government oversight, and the whole idea of an anonymous selection committee and sole discretion and complete privacy over how those funds were to be redistributed did not sit well with me as an elected official making decisions about large amounts of public funds. That was my choice, and that was the choice of three other members.
How much of a fight did 46 have?
But we listened, and we responded. Ordinance 46 was a statement of goodwill, setting aside, I think it was 1.5 million for small business recovery efforts, which we followed through on, and we ended up with $700,000 set aside for grants, service agreement grants, and for, uh, forgivable loans, up to $5,000, $15,000, for businesses that applied, and those were based on front-end and back-end metrics. The front-end metrics meant that that loan amount was on a weighted scale based on annual payroll revenue generated, and there were other metrics involved in there, too.
No, you're taking credit for the 51. That's not what, I didn't ever ask this. This is public commentary where I, you asked me a question, I mentioned 46. Now you've gone on to take, to take credit for it.
Forty-six was the umbrella, 46 was the umbrella and placeholder for 51 and 52. It was us trying to say, make a gesture in good faith that we were going to meet in this committee.
And I am sorry, I cannot look.
You may not interrupt.
Say that.
You may not interrupt. It was a statement, a gesture in good faith that we would work on this in committees, which we did. We followed through on, and you can watch all those recorded committees on ICRC. Now, some members, like the member to my left, your right, decided to create a narrative that somehow there was something untoward about ordinance 46. And I believe that some members, in executing that narrative, did leak executive session information. I saw it all over social media.
We never had executive session on it. You wouldn't allow anyone to talk on it.
We, we didn't have executive session on ordinance 46.
I would like.
But the narrative covered that. You need to wait till you're acknowledged by the chair. Mr. Garvin, do you have anything else to ask of council? I hope that I've covered all of your.
Don't put your hand up towards me.
I need to put my hand up.
Respectful.
Mayor, you've insulted me three times tonight, so I've got, I've got those all written down. I appreciate, appreciate your time and, and addressing the questions that I had today.
And I'm, thank you for raising your concerns today and giving us an opportunity to address those. Council member Nelson?
Yes, I, I am not gonna, I don't think it's professional at all to fight with our residents. Um, I think we should listen to them and not dispute them and fight with them. But I am, I am going to say that there was a lot of false statements that were just said there, Mayor Grossman.
Please list them.
Well, for one, you proposed $150,000 ordinance with zero details, had nothing to do with funding of our small businesses. You refused to talk about it. You refused to allow the public to, to know what this was for. I have never, in my, how many years have I been doing this? Four or five years? I don't know how many ever years I've been doing this. I have never received, um, legislation to spend any money without complete details, and you had zero details in there, and you would not allow any of us to talk without shutting the meeting down time and time and time again. All that I had asked for was, you were about ready to pass it, and we had no details on it, and I said, "No, let's, we need a second reading on it, and we need to have a work session to figure out what this is for." And you shut that down time and time and time again.
We delivered everything.
That is not transparent at all, and, and it was not an umbrella. You turned it into an umbrella after quite some time after the city employees came up with a plan that you took credit for, which is fine, but, um, you, you know, you tried to, to hide it and say, "Hey, oh, it's under the umbrella. This is what it was originally all along." And that is not true.
Council member Nelson?
I think we should move on.
Council member Nelson, everything you just said was false. We did deliver.
It's in the record.
It was a 1.5.
Do not, I mean, have you not watched?
It is in the record, and this is in the record.
Okay, I'm not gonna.
The proposal I gave to staff.
Okay.
We talked about these meetings, in these meetings at length, about coming up with a program that the CIC could execute, but that staff and council could manage with front-end metrics and back-end metrics and accountability. And we wanted to come up alongside businesses to offer an incentive to stay open, because we didn't believe that, um, just blindly handing out grant money was the best way to use public funds. It's a great way to use private sector donations, but it wasn't the best use of public funds. We delivered everything we said that we would deliver, and staff was amazing. Staff came up with more ideas than we had. There was a lot of synergy there and collaboration. And if you watch our meetings on ICRC, they're very civil, and sometimes we had ideas that we couldn't pull off. We wanted to do a tax credit or some type of tax rollback, but we realized that was going to be too complicated. But you can go back and watch those meetings. Ordinances 51 and 52 are here. They all use the same boilerplate economic development language as 43 also has. They're very similar, and there was never a nefarious agenda. And so I think what we could do is celebrate that we ended up coming up with a very innovative and aggressive and comprehensive program as a city, collaborating with staff and committee and with council. And I would argue that it's the most aggressive, uh, small business recovery effort in the nation at the local level, especially on a per capita basis. If you can find something more aggressive, that's great. We'll be happy for those communities. But anyway, I hope that we got all of, oh, let's talk about one more thing, because you brought it up, and so did Mr. Garvin. The infamous six-minute meeting, we followed all of the rules. And what's really interesting is that members, sitting to my left, not only shouted and interrupted as we went through our roll call to adjourn the meeting and made claims of fraud and asked for a motion to donate salary and things like that. They were given explicit directions from our law director prior to the meeting exactly how the meeting was to go according to Robert's Rules. And I believe that at least one of those individuals was advised by our law director that it would not be appropriate to make a motion to donate a salary. So that's the part of the story that some of you are not sharing and giving the full, the full picture. Mr. Chance, if you'd like to respond real quick, that's great, and then I think we need to get to the next visitor.
I agree. Well, first of all, you talk about handing over money when we could have done it in March, I guess that was the 28th or 30th. And I've said it, I don't know how many times, Mayor, immediate cash to these small business owners outweighs this fictitious five-times number, because if you really break down the numbers, and if any businessperson looked at this, it's just, it's the whole bait-and-switch program of, you know, it's 790,000 over, it was lost revenue to the city. It wasn't money that these small business owners were getting, so let's, let's make sure of that. And plus, you know, we're handing over the controls and the reins to a committee that you guys believed that was, could perform better than our chamber. This committee never, they met once in the last 15 years, one time in the last 15 years. And they knew our small business community better than the chamber that oversees 1,800 different businesses day in and day out? So, so that's what I'm saying. This is what the epitome of what's wrong with our country, is that it wasn't, it wasn't an idea that you could get behind, so you had to figure out a different mode, and I am, this is, this is my opinion, it, but don't, just please don't sit up here and try to, in your sanctimonious jargon and talk.
That is inappropriate, impugning motive, and attacking character.
If you're, you're, you're saying the members to your left. I know you're referring to, I know you're not referring to him. There's only two other members to your left. And don't use Robert's Rules as a weapon. Don't be proud of that. Don't act like all these politicians we see on the national level. Are you proud of yourself of that? That you're able to call up the law.
All right, let's move on. Council member Chance, you're way out of order. You need to stop.
You just sit there and you're the minimum left.
The rules of decorum and order are here for a reason. You need to stop. All right, are there any other visitors? I'm so sorry to everyone that we are having trouble following the rules right now. Are there any other visitors who would like to approach the podium at this time? Sir, in the back, come on up. When you arrive, please state your name and address.
Hello. My name's Jordan Hardy. I live at 6473 Timbers Court. I have no idea what just happened, but I, I think it's a testament to the kind of society we live in that people can just come up here and rightly or wrongly completely slam people in power, and nothing happens to them. So I think we should all sort of appreciate that we live in a society where that can happen. That's something very important. I'm here today, I understand it might not be the most popular thing in the world, but Governor DeWine is, has been issuing mask orders to counties once they reach a certain threshold of, of cases. And my opinion is that this is the wrong way to go about this. I've been trying to contact DeWine's office, but I also felt that my voice should be a lot more heard here at the local level, because I don't think we should just wait until we have, like, way more cases than we have now to issue a mask order. I think we should be proactive about it. I think that would save lives. So I'm basically coming here today to propose that the council draft legislation to issue a mandatory mask order in Mason, so when you're in public, same thing that we see in Butler County, basically. I, I think it would be responsible. I think it would lessen the individual and economic impact of this pandemic. I understand there's some opposition to this, but as someone who's familiar with the Constitution, familiar with the political philosophy that led to its founding, there's nothing in it that's against a mask order. I've seen some pretty ridiculous opposition to it, and I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that, to consider doing that before DeWine issues the order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Eric, would you like to respond to that, please?
And just give a couple of comments, because we have received other questions on that, and it's, there's not a clear-cut answer, and I'm somewhat channeling Jeff Forbes, CCI's law director, who could not be here tonight. Looked into the question. Whether the city has authority to issue a mask order isn't simple. We may have authority. You've seen some cities that have issued mask orders. Common denominator there is they also have their own health departments. And most of this authority, government authority generally, would be, because of the state, would be most appropriately channeled through a health department, which doesn't absolutely answer the question whether we do have the authority, but it gets further complicated if we were to try and make an argument that the city could, that we do have appropriate authority to issue a mask order. That would only be if it doesn't conflict with general orders. As you're aware, Governor DeWine and the state has an order as far as how counties would, would fall under a mask type of mandate. If the city were tried to do something and negotiate that so it didn't come into conflict with that, that would be, that'd be another level of complexity, just determining whether that was something that fell within appropriate use, use of city authority. I had three points here, and I think I only made two. I think finally, just reiterating, local health districts would be the appropriate place. Mason falls under the Warren County Health Department, and that is where, what, what in government you would call police authority, which doesn't mean just police crimes, but our police authority to make laws, that would pretty much be co-opted by county health department in this instance. So I know that's a little bit of legal jargon funneled through an imperfect quarterback or armchair attorney, but that, those are the complications that we found when we started looking at. It didn't seem like something that merited a lot of legal research or a lot of expense to try and pursue something that council may not be interested in, especially when the state seems to have moved forward on that.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Is anyone else?
Hello, everyone. I'm Mark Lortz. I live at 5145 Minuteman Court. My, I have a simple question, actually. It's about three ordinances that will be voted on prior to the next recognition of visitors, and that would be, well, item, agenda item 19, 20, and 21. And I wanted to find out if we could get some indication of what these are about prior to the vote occurring. So can anybody tell me what those three agenda items mean?
Yes, and maybe that saves some time at the end of the meeting. These are.
Welcome.
These are what we call TIFs, which is Tax Increment Financing. City has a TIF district, and this is a way to incentivize economic development. We have a TIF district that exists. This would help define it into three specific development areas within that district. The district, the overall district that's being discussed here in, between these three
ordinances, and this is largely housekeeping measure and something that's been worked for many years, would define areas within a district that basically encompasses from the Western Row interchange, the new interchange, and to some extent along Western Row Road to Mason Montgomery Road.
And that's what the three agenda items specifically? Okay. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I can--
Thank you, Mr. Lortz. Please wait to be acknowledged by the chair. Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I think that's a really good point, actually. I mean, we, you know, we give our agenda out, I believe it's online, for residents to see, but they don't have any detail on it. And I do get calls sometimes or questions from individuals, what's this about? What's that about? We really don't give our residents enough information on what we're voting on before we vote on it. I would like to possibly look at, you know, maybe create a committee or something, or, you know, talk to Eric, or do something that we give more information out there before our meetings so that if people have concerns or questions, they know to come to the meeting or, you know, they're prepared to ask questions. It's just so vague that they don't, people don't really know what's going on within our city. And I think it's important to really engage and get more people actively involved. Eric, do you think that that's something that we can look into, is how we can get more detailed information to them?
I'm looking to Lisa for clarification. The ordinances, excuse me, the ordinances are available through the webpage. It's not as--
Details are? Not just the ordinance, but the details are as well?
No, so each ordinance is put up as proposed prior to the council meeting at the same time the agenda goes out on Fridays?
Okay. But no details behind it like that we get in our packets? It's just the ordinance? Okay.
The legislation piece with exhibits? No exhibits?
No exhibits. Sometimes the exhibits are very large, usually coming from Kurt, and people looking at their phones or things like that, it will bog everything down. So if you request an exhibit, we can send that your way.
But would it have more information than what we're seeing here? Okay.
Agenda, absolutely.
So maybe that was the answer to your question. Yeah, okay. It's good to know we can go there beforehand.
Great.
Anything else for me?
If there are questions, and this, just generally on exhibits or items, that is all public record. If it doesn't fit on the website or fit on your phone, give us a call and we can provide any of that.
Anything else for me? Good. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing that there are none, let's move on to item eight, Resolution 2020-4. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Eric?
Jeff Heft was going to cover this.
Oh.
Jeff Forbes.
That's why I missed Jeff. Again, I'm going to need to be reminded of that a couple times.
That's all right.
I'm sorry.
Oh, here.
Proclaiming July as National Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, annually, the city has the opportunity around this time of year to recognize those employees, develop programs for us, as well as maintain our recreational facilities for our residents and our business community. This year's theme is "We Are Parks and Recreation." City council has long recognized parks and recreational programming as adding to the quality of life for our residents, again, and in the business community. Within the past two years, city council has approved over $25 million toward recreation and parks in our community. This year, we'll see a number of those facilities come online, including McKino Park, Common Ground Playground, Phase One redevelopment of Sudden Fields at Heritage Oak Park, along with the new Aquatic Center. Mason's Community Center still remains at the foundations of the city's efforts for building a culture of wellness and a unique tool for our economic development recruitment activities. These facilities, combined with our golf center, over 300 acres of parkland and over 25 miles of bike path, combined with our ability to build some unique partnerships, like with Western Southern Open and the Warren County Convention and Visitors Bureau, create a diverse and thriving recreational ecosystem for our community. Resolution 2020-4 provides us the opportunity to recognize park and recreation staff and what they do on a daily basis to create what we have here in the community, as well as forging our mission for the future. Resolution 2020-4 is recommended for adoption.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? All right, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Thank you. Item eight, Resolution 2020-5.
Resolution affirming the spending of CARES Act funding, authorizing the finance director to take all required action and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Heft?
Yes, mayor, members of council. In March, President Trump signed into law the CARES Act that'll provide funding for, funding relief for local governments in support of COVID-19 and the pandemic. I can't talk tonight. Local governments with a population of 500,000 or more are scheduled to receive federal funding directly. However, those government entities that have less than 5,000 as their population, that distribution will flow through the state of Ohio. The state of Ohio is scheduled to receive 4.53 billion to distribute to our local governments. Mason is currently scheduled to receive roughly $136,000. This amount may vary based upon the number of jurisdictions that submit for funding, as well as the distribution formula that is ultimately figured out between the state and the counties. One of the steps necessary for us to even be considered for a distribution of these reimbursing funding is the adoption of Resolution 2020-5. This ordinance simply affirms the city's expenditures as it relates to our efforts assisting with COVID-19 pandemic. For a number of years, the city has developed and practiced an incident command structure with procedures and processes. This has been very valuable to us because often when we're in an emergency situation, we can receive federal funding if we have the proper paperwork and documentation in place. So when COVID-19 broke out, our incident, our incident command team readily stepped up, mobilized in order to not only assist with what was happening in the community, but also to prepare the necessary document should the federal government come through with funding. In this case, they did. Resolution 2020-5 was modeled after a template provided by the Ohio Municipal League and was reviewed by city's legal counsel. The IC team is recommending Resolution 2020-5 for adoption in order to receive the reimbursement for federal government funds.
Thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Any council discussion? Yes.
In section three of 2025, it says that this, there is hereby appropriated from CARES Act, House Bill 41, funded amount of $836,664.
I rounded.
You said 136,000.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna, yeah.
Sorry. 836,000.
Okay, I was just making sure. I was like, that is rounding error. You. Yeah.
Wow, that was a great question. It's amazing how things have added up over time. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Okay, item number 13 is Ordinance 2020-53. We have a public hearing. Okay, we'll set the public hearing time. Wait, let's, we want to read by title only first. Oh, gosh, did I skip something? Oh, it's number nine. It's noted number 13 on my agenda. I don't know why, but that's okay. We'll fix that. All right, item number nine, Ordinance 2020-53. We have a public hearing, and item 10 would be the second reading of Ordinance 2020-53. I need a motion to read by title only. Do I have a page in my? Okay, I must have an erroneous, let me, let me, hold on, everybody. Pause. I'm so sorry. I may have a defect in my agenda, so hold on. I had a new copy for me at my desk, so I'm kind of wondering if maybe that was an improvement that I didn't realize. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's really different. Okay, my apologies, everybody. All right, number nine is Resolution 2020-6, and I need a motion to read that by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Eric?
Mayor, point of order, I think it's actually item 10 is headed.
Oh, we did. Thank you. Wow, guys. My first two pages of my agenda is completely correct, and then it's completely wrong after that. Okay, so I've got a completely right one now, I think. So item 10 is Resolution 2020-6. Thank you for pointing that out. So we, did we do our motion to read by title only? No, I'm all mixed up. We did. Okay, everybody, thank you. Eric needs to read by title only.
Resolution 2020-6, declaring the necessity and intention to appropriate property for the widening of State Route 741 from Cox Smith Road to Weldon Drive and declaring an emergency.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. I know this is difficult to see, but this is the 741 project from Spyglass Hill to Weldon Drive. So what you're looking at, it's, it fits better on the screen sideways. So north is actually to the right, with, over here to the left is the beginning of the project, US 42. This is Bethany Road, and the railroad cuts through here. So for this, this nearly $8 million project, we had 24 parcels we had to acquire right-of-way from. About 19 of those are acquired. One is the railroad, and then four are remaining, which are these yellow highlighted areas. So that's the four resolutions that you have tonight in front of you are these remaining parcels and, sorry about that. So these, what this is, is this will initiate the process if we needed to acquire these through eminent domain process. What would happen is this resolution first gets served to the property owners, and a couple of these are the storage facilities that are located across the country. They've been difficult to get ahold of, their legal counsel and the correct people. So a lot of times, just by doing these resolutions, it'll help get negotiations going. We don't need to go any further. If we did after these resolutions, the next step would be to take an ordinance to counsel, which would probably be in the, at the August or September meeting. And our deadline from ODOT is by end of October to have all of the right-of-way acquired. So by doing it now, it gives us enough time to initiate the process and get these acquired. So resident, this is resolutions 2020-6 through nine are all recommended for adoption and I'll answer any questions that you have.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any council discussion? Vice Mayor Gilb?
So Kurt, I would, I think you somewhat touched on the question of, this is the first step into eminent domain.
Yes.
Have there already been discussions with these owners about voluntarily transferring these properties over to the city or?
Yes, so, yep, sorry. So with a, with a federal project, we, and I kind of skipped over that, but like all the rest of our federal projects, we have to have an ODOT-certified appraiser appraise the property. And this, this exhibit just shows the permanent highway easements that we need. There's, in addition to this, there's some temporary easements generally for grading on the properties to blend the project in that aren't shown. But they'll appraise the permanent and temporary easements. Then we have an ODOT-certified appraisal reviewer that also reviews it, and then an ODOT-certified negotiator that approaches each property owner with a package, basically that says this is what the property acquisition is worth and offers, makes the formal offer. So all of those steps have taken place over the past year. We've done all the appraisals for the whole project and negotiated, the appraisal, appraisal review and negotiations have occurred on all of them. There are a few that just, when you have this many, there's some that are always just unresponsive, and you don't know what is happening. They'll sign for the package, and then we don't hear anything back. We make calls, repeated attempts to get ahold of them. So sometimes just seeing a resolution like this, letting them know we have a timeline, will help initiate some, some feedback from the property owners, so.
So that was somewhat, where my question was going to was certainly an inversion to having to exercise eminent domain powers. Do we have property owners that are being difficult in terms of willing to transfer their properties?
On these, of these four, I would say probably two of them have probably unrealistic expectations of what the property appraisal, they think our appraisal is low and our appraisal review, appraiser, both appraisers are low. And so what they'll do typically is they'll get their own appraisal, and if they give us feedback, we'll go to mediation. Depending on how quickly that, that takes place, we generally have to do the quick-take process and continue to negotiate prior to it going to court. So we, we've had a pretty good track record of not having to go to court and working out some reasonable offer, but, but there's a few here that, that may.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? All right, let's call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes, are we calling the roll for all of those or we have to do separate ones for each? Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Item number 11, Resolution 2020-7. I need a motion to read by title only, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Eric?
Declaring the necessity and intention to appropriate property for the widening of State Route 741 from Cox Smith Road to Weldon Drive and declaring an emergency.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt. Thank you. Any council discussion? Let's call the roll.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn? Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice, Vice Mayor Gilb?
Item 12, Resolution 2020-8. Motion to read by title only, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Eric?
Sorry, still missing Jeff. Declaring the necessity and intention to appropriate property for the widening of State Route 741 from Cox Smith Road to Weldon Drive and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend the rule, please, and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Council discussion? Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn? Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb? Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Item number 13, we have Resolution 2020-9. I need a motion to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Eric?
Declaring the necessity and intention to appropriate property for the widening of State Route 741 from Cox Smith Road to Weldon Drive and declaring an emergency.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? A motion to adopt, please? Any council discussion? Let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, now, it's time for items 13 and 14. We have ordinance 2020-53, we have a public hearing and that will be followed by a second reading. I need a motion to read by title only, please. Oh, we're at 14 and 15. Okay, sorry about that, guys. We're at items 14 and 15. All right. Is there a motion to read by title only? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Eric?
Amending the zoning code and zoning map of the city of Mason, Ohio to provide for the rezoning of approximately 2.7 acres from B3, Road Service Commercial, to I1, Light Industrial, located behind 1110 Redding Road. Redding Road rezoning.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This rezoning is located on Redding Road, just south of Western Row Road. This is, this parcel here is where the Western Row Plaza is. To the south is Carter Lumber and on the, to the south on 42 is the Klosterman Bakery. This is currently a vacant property. It's where Rippey Brothers Appliance used to be. That building has been razed and, and the parcel is vacant. What the proposal is tonight, let's see, this is the, shows the surrounding zoning, the red being the B3 and the blue is the I1 in the area. So, the proposal is to rezone, oops, I'm sorry, rezone the back part of the parcel to I1 and to leave the front acreage as B3. So, the rezoning is just this back hatched area. They also own this parcel here, so the, the goal is to leave some of the frontage up here as the B3 Road Service Commercial District. Planning Commission did review this and recommended approval as it's consistent with the surrounding property. Looking at our, our future land use map and the comprehensive plan, it calls this area out as a industrial, light industrial park to the east and, and south, or, calls it out as a neighborhood mixed use and, but it, there is a light industrial, industrial park to the east and south. So, staff and, and also Planning Commission feel that the rezoning would retain that commercial zoning along running, Redding Road and be consistent with our land use plan. So, with that, ordinance 2020-53 is recommended for adoption. I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. All right, it's time to open up the public hearing. It's 8:14 PM. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Okay, seeing that there are none, it's still 8:14. Just close the public hearing. Let's give it a minute. All right, it's 8:15. We're going to close the public hearing at 8:15. I need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? All right, let's call the roll, please.
Member Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Item 16 is ordinance 2020-61, I need a motion to read by title only.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Eric?
Approval of the dedication plat for Hagman Crossing Phase 1.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The, this dedication plat, this, this applicant's been very patient with us. This, this is kind of a unique situation. This is located on US 42. It's just north of the Ambleside Meadows subdivision. This parcel, most of it is actually located in the city of Lebanon. The frontage is located in the city of Mason. So, this plat before you tonight is just the dedication of right-of-way for US 42. There was a highway easement on it and the parcel actually extended to the, the center line of the, the roadway. So, when this parcel was annexed by Lebanon, they went to the corp, to the right-of-way line. And then when we annexed across the street, we took in the roadway just so there wouldn't be a split, so half the roads in the city, half the roads not in the city. So, unfortunately for the applicant, he's been, been patient, so he's had to go to both Mason and Lebanon for some approvals. This is a PUD located in the city of Lebanon, but just the frontage is in the city of Mason. So, he's been working with us as far as the curb cut. We looked at this as a minor subdivision with five lots. However, when this commercial, there's a little bit of commercial out front, if that were to develop in the future, they would need to put in the turn lanes that we would normally require on a major arterial roadway like this. So, our, our one contingency on this was that that note be added to the plat. It was a part of the PUD approval through Lebanon. But other than that, we recommend adoption of ordinance 2020-61. I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Any council discussion? Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Item 17 is ordinance 2020-62, I need a motion to read by title only, please.
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Eric?
Accepting the public improvements for Willowbrook, The Meadows, Section 4 and releasing the performance bond.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you. This is the Willowbrook subdivision. It's located on Mason Marrow Mill Grove Road. It, the subdivision actually lies on both sides of the road. It's just east of our water reclamation plant. The, most of the subdivision is accepted. This will actually be the last portion of it. It contains part of Stone Ridge Drive and Nighthawk Court. And with the, with the pass, passing of this ordinance, the entire subdivision then will become the, the maintenance for, for the city of Mason for the roads and sanitary sewer. And so, with that, ordinance 2020-62 is recommended for adoption.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Any council discussion? Seeing there is none, let's call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Item 18 on the agenda is ordinance 2020-63, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Eric?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the replacement of a storm sewer culvert in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
And Eric is going to discuss this with us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I did want to, I, I know stormwater culverts aren't the most exciting thing that we deal with here, but this does merit a little bit of background. You'll remember, early this year, the city was very blessed and excited. We had three major economic development projects announced, which is always good news, but these were especially good news. They opened up the northern Mason R&amp;D Park that had been envisioned for many years and we did not anticipate seeing activity there for many more years in the future. So, a great opportunity there. One of the companies locating there, and this would be along the eastern portion of that R&amp;D Park, along US 42 across from Ambleside, was Precision Cast Parts Corporation. And despite the uncertainty of, you know, the recent economy and pandemic, they are moving forward with their project. In fact, I think was noteworthy here, on their northern side of, of the roadway there, they have opted to use an underground detention system. And why that is advantageous to them is that allows them to maximize the site of their facility, which we appreciate, and further allows them to plan for a possible expansion footprint in the future, which we also appreciate. What that, that allows them to control the stormwater released from the site. And I should also mention, as part of this project, a thousand-foot, three-lane roadway will be constructed and that is funded both by the company as well as some state incentives that we were fortunate to receive. So, no cost to the city for that improvement. They, they meet the criteria for their stormwater outflow with an 18-inch culvert. However, because that will flow into an 18-inch culvert under 42, and in, in order to accommodate the possibility of flood routing, if there should be a large storm event or should there be a blockage in the underground detention system, the city does not want to be in a position where stormwater would be flowing over US 42. So, upsizing the, the culvert under 42 is advisable. Precision Cast Parts, their site design engineer will be producing the plans for that and the city would then be able to bid and manage the construction of that project. There are stormwater funds that are appropriate to use for this project and were budgeted for, for different types of stormwater projects, so the dollars are available. This will, in addition, doing this work will support the larger R&amp;D proper, project, not just the Precision Cast Parts portion, but the possibility of future land uses, future projects would come there. The purpose of this ordinance then is to express the city's support, both for PCC and our commitment to replacing, moving forward, replacing the culvert to keep the PCC project on target, which is very exciting for the city of Mason in terms of economic development. With that, ordinance 2020-63 is recommended for adoption.
Thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any council discussion? All right, let's call the roll.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Item number 19 is ordinance 2020-64, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Eric?
Amending provisions of Section 1301.01 of the codified ordinances of the city of Mason regarding pool barrier regulations for 1, 2, and 3-family dwellings.
Thank you. Kurt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. In 2006, the state took over building codes throughout the, throughout the entire state for 1, 2, and 3-family homes, as Eric mentioned. The, the state code, however, did not include anything for pool barriers. So, at that time, city of Mason, like a lot of the surrounding jurisdictions, passed our own regulations for pool barriers so that we, we required fencing around pools. And our code actually only defines a barrier as a fence or wall that obstructs access to the pool. However, lately, we've seen a few pool, what were called automatic pool covers that can be, that basically are motorized and, or, I think generally motorized, that go across the pool. You can actually walk across them. They're rated for 485 pounds of weight or per five square feet, so they can hold a substantial amount of weight. And the benefit to these is, although they're more expensive, if a pool is unsupervised, a kid could climb over a fence, get access to the pool. Whereas with this type of barrier, it, it, you could argue that as long as you cover it, that it's safer to keep unsupervised access from happening at a pool. So, sort of like a, a gate on a fence, you have to remember to shut the gate, which is why we, we required auto locking gates for fences. If you remember to cover this, cover your pool every time you leave it, this can actually be even a safer solution. So, the proposal here is like several of the surrounding jurisdictions, is to allow powered covers in the city of Mason. And then the second change to this ordinance is to allow a, a little bit different type of fence. Right now, we have pretty strict regulations in our, in our fencing requirements for pool barriers, which is one and three-quarter inch mesh. Generally, that's only sold in a two-inch mesh, so it makes it very difficult for homeowners to find. And we also require that there be no more than four-inch spacing between the vertical rails, which is fine, but then anytime you have a third rail, that that makes the fence noncompliant. And the reason for that originally was that it would keep potentially young kids from being able to climb the fence easier with the additional horizontal rail. However, many surrounding jurisdictions have a decorative fence that has a double top rail that makes it more, more decorative. And that's probably the most common fence that we see. And so, we have a lot of this type of fence in the city of Mason that's technically noncompliant with our code. So, the second, the second part of that, the ordinance proposed tonight is to make some changes to the, the actual fencing requirements for pool barriers. So, with that, ordinance 2020-64 is recommended for adoption. It both allows powered safety covers as an option for a barrier and then it allows additional fencing options that would also still restrict swimming pool access. So, with that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Any council discussion?
I have some questions.
Yes.
I have a lot of concern with this ordinance, not having a gate when there's children around. A lot of our neighborhoods in Mason, they all back up to each other. If you don't, if you don't put the cover on, what happens during the day when you're in and out and you're swimming and it looks good and you have people over and you don't put the cover on and a little kid, two houses away, bolts out of their house, which they do a lot, and falls into this pool and drowns. I am not for this ordinance at all. I think there's a huge safety issue with children around. We have, like, in our neighborhood, we have a Down Syndrome child who bolts all the time. I just don't, I, I can't, as a council member, feel good about passing this ordinance and, and knowing that there's pools that are uncovered without fences there where easily small children could fall in it. I am for doing something to, you know, change the fencing. If, if our code is making it so people have to get custom fencing, you know, I don't think that's appropriate. So, I mean, I would like to bring it back to the drawing board and, and look at just the fences if we can do something more that's, you know, they don't have to invest so much money in having a custom fence, might. But I personally am not going to vote for this. It's basically a pool with, with no safeguards in place.
If I could just make a couple comments. I, I think the, the covers that we've seen, the barrier covers that we've seen have been in areas where the pool maybe is very close to the floodplain, where if you put a fence around it and the creek, although the pool itself isn't in the floodplain, some of the fencing might be and that it's prohibitive. And the ones that we've seen have a key. So, when, when you turn the key, it opens or closes the pool barrier. So, then when you, when it's closed and you pull the key out, no one can, a kid couldn't just come up and, and open the barrier while nobody's supervised without the key. So, there is some safety that's built into these. These are, but anyway, that's for what that's for.
If you, if you open the cover, you go inside the house and you're doing something, cooking whatever. I mean, the pool is open. There's no cover on the pool and there's no fence around the pool.
Right, so that it would be similar to a gate, where if you go through the gate and let's say your spring is broken on your, your gate that's going to shut, you would need to be responsible enough to make sure you close the gate and that it latches and it's a latch that a little kid couldn't just easily open. There's some, and then the other thing is, keep in mind, even when you fence a pool, and this is stuff that I, I've had the same concerns with our, our chief building official, a fence, one thing that he pointed out too is a fence doesn't protect anyone from inside the house, from opening a sliding door or whatever, going straight out into the pool. So, that is another way that this, this type of barrier could prevent that type of situation. So, there's give and take and I think there's a certain amount of risk you take with a pool. So, this is just to give our residents additional option to provide some protection with additional option for them, so, but it's, it's up to you.
Any other questions? Yes.
How many requests have we had for this type or is that how it was brought to our attention?
Yeah, there's maybe been four total.
And so, their, their intentions are to do this opposed to a fence?
Right now, they, they, and I know there's one that's a situation like Councilmember Nelson mentioned, where I think it's only the barrier and no fence. mentioned, where I think it's only the barrier and no fence. I think the others have a fence, plus they have the retractable cover. And there's, I don't recall all the situations, but they're basically noncompliant at this time. They were allowed, those pools haven't been finaled out, because there was a note on the permit that said you need to add a fence. They haven't added the fence yet, and so they're just kind of in limbo at this time. So that was just...
I guess that's kind of my, it's customary, I mean, if you're putting a pool in, that I would never think of not putting a fence in. So I guess that's why I'm looking at passing legislation to where it's like, it's counterintuitive to where I would think anyone putting a pool in says, well, I'd better put a fence in. I love putting the cover on as well, because I'm guessing that's for protection, it's for keeping debris out of the pool and everything else, and it's probably easier to manage and clean and all that good stuff. So, yeah, I just don't know if it's one person in the entire city that's looking to do this, to pass legislation to allow more to do it.
My understanding is it's very expensive, so we don't get a lot of requests for it.
Sure. You mean the cover?
The cover, yeah, is very expensive.
So, I guess that brings me to another point. I mean, I hate to pass motive on anyone's monetary positions, but if they can afford that type of cover, I'm guessing they could probably afford a fence.
Yeah, it's generally that type of situation where a fence isn't going to work, either the way their yard's laid out, or for some reason.
I guess maybe on the one-offs.
I wish I had more detail for you.
The one-offs, I'd be willing to look at.
Right.
And, but, you know, paint with a wide brush here, I don't know if that's the smartest way of going about it, but that's my opinion.
Anyone else? Yes.
What we're talking about here, though, is giving residents the option, is that correct?
Right.
So we're removing a couple of barriers for them to get this done, putting the owner's back on them to decide what is the best situation for my backyard.
Right.
Okay.
Defining a barrier as both a fence or a retractable cover.
Sure. And ultimately, the homeowner's...
They could put in both.
...happens in their backyard.
Right.
So, I think I would be more for allowing these options, removing some barriers to allow these things to be easier to be done, and, not barriers like fence, barriers to the zoning, right?
Barriers to approval.
So I would be okay with the legislation. I think that would be fine. Again, we're removing government oversight.
Vice Mayor?
Taking it easier.
Thank you.
I see it says that the ordinance is recommended for adoption, but I don't know who's recommending it for adoption. Has this gone through a committee, safety committee? Have they looked at this? Who's, I don't know who's recommending?
Staff.
Staff is recommending this for adoption. I think it's appropriate to probably study this a little bit further. I'm, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the safety committee, to take a look at whether this is the appropriate thing to do from a safety angle for the community. And I'd just make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. That was going to be my suggestion after everybody went. So I hate to keep this homeowner waiting, but I think it's worthwhile to table it and take a closer look, and I think the safety committee is due for a meeting soon anyways. So, my sincere apologies, I would like to research it a little bit more personally as well, so I think that might help us at least with our comfort level, and make sure we're making a really informed decision, even though you did give us a good memo on this. So, anybody else have any council discussion on that? All right, so that is tabled and referred to a committee. All right, item 20 is Ordinance 2020-65. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Mr. Hanson?
Okay. Missing Jeff, I'm just a mouthful here. Declaring improvements to parcels of real property located in the city of Mason, Ohio, to be of public purpose under Section 5709.41 of the Ohio Revised Code, exempting such improvements from real property taxation, authorizing the execution of a tax incentive agreement, and such other documents as may be necessary, establishing a tax increment equivalent fund.
Okay, thank you. Eric's going to discuss this ordinance, 65, along with ordinances 66 and 67 together.
Yes, and I can keep this as brief or go as long as council would like. I gave you the overview earlier. I think as councils are aware, and maybe some of the audience, a tax increment financing is a way where a development raises, the property valuation therefore raises the tax that that piece of property is subject to, that some of that tax revenue can be directed to public improvements that are needed to support that type of development. So it's ultimately a way to improve the quality, the density of new development, in Mason's case, certainly economic development. The Oak Park R and D District that we described earlier begins near the Western Row interchange and extends to some fashion over to Mason Montgomery Road. These three ordinances confirm the TIF, establish three distinct development areas, what is called Oak Park East, two areas there along the interchange. It's about 250 acres, a portion of that owned by the city. The area is master planned to accommodate high-technology biohealth, medical device, and R and D companies, anticipating in the future a considerable amount of office employment center there that will generate revenues via earnings tax to support other services that the community requires. So this is looked at the future of economic development for the city of Mason, and the TIF, this TIF action helps establish that and provide some of the tools for that future. Then the area known as Oak Park West, it's about 70 acres along Mason Montgomery and Western Row. It's intended that that would be an upscale mixed-use development, also supporting and helping to attract high-tech and office development on some of the acreage there. All of this is intended, obviously, to provide more robust tools and density of employment for economic development, to help generate the revenues necessary, support the services that residents enjoy. There's a lot of detail that goes into the TIF. There's been a lot of work on these. This is largely housekeeping measure to help continue the process, establish the development areas, and situate each of them to further economic development. Some of the improvements that could be included, and this is also, underlying all of this, I should have mentioned, these type of developments require considerable public infrastructure in terms of roadways. Some of the improvements anticipated here would be roadway extensions, widenings, utility extensions, potentially parking garages, signals, master development amenities. All of those are considerable investments in order to attract this type of development, and that is what the TIF is intended to, is to help provide a revenue stream that is generated from the development itself to support that. This is a step of an ongoing process. These aren't related to any specific project. This is establishing geographic areas to help attract the type of development that we would hope to locate there. As in the past, this action would be followed up with separate ordinances providing for issuance of what's called TIF revenue bonds to construct infrastructure that would be related to any, then, current projects. So there are more steps to this as development occurs. I think council is familiar, basically, with the TIF methodology, as far as how those work, how they generate revenues, and how the debt issued is both supported by the revenues and supports the infrastructure. With that, this action is expected to enable the city to continue to attract corporate high-tech businesses along key development areas such as this. And these three ordinances provide the necessary authorizations, both to establish the TIF funds, as well as anticipate future public investment. All three are recommended for adoption.
Thank you. Could we display the geographical area, just so that our audience can see what we're describing? If you have that ability, we can keep going through the meeting, and if you don't have it, that's okay, too. We're not sure. So we'll keep going, and if it comes up, it comes up, and then that way you guys can see an image of what we're talking about. I lost it on my screen. Basically, this is it, and we're working to get it up on the large screen. We'll see if that works. All right, so, we need a motion to read by title, no, we need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading. Thank you, Kurt. That's what we were talking about. So that's just the geographical overlay of the region covered by this TIF. All right, is there a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading?
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? A motion to adopt, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? All right, let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes. All right, item 21 is Ordinance 2020-66. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Eric?
All right.
It's okay.
Declaring improvements to parcels of real property located in the city of Mason, Ohio, to be of public purpose under Section 5709.40B of the Ohio Revised Code, exempting such improvements from real property taxation, authorizing the execution of a tax incentive agreement, and such other documents as may be necessary, establishing a tax increment equivalent fund.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion?
Mayor, I just have a real quick question.
Yes.
And I know the law director's not here, but I always get confused when it says, when we read it, it's the exact same language, but different Ohio Revised Code. Eric?
There's three different districts here. One of them consists of city-owned property, which has some different, because how you would secure that, it's different sections of the ORC and different methodology as far as the TIF.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Good question. Anyone else? You know, our staff does an incredible amount of work putting these together. It's extremely tedious, and a lot of legal work goes behind this. All right, anyone else? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
I need, Ordinance 2020-67, I need a motion to read by title only, please.
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Oh, I think my crew's getting tired. Eric?
Declaring improvements to parcels of real property located in the city of Mason, Ohio, to be of public purpose under Section 5709.40B of the Ohio Revised Code, exempting such improvements from real property taxation, authorizing the execution of a tax incentive agreement, and such other documents as may be necessary, establishing tax increment equivalent fund. I think I'm insecure that I misread which codified section it was. I think I got it right.
You did.
All right, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Micro machine over there.
Did we get a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, thank you. All right, council discussion. All right, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
All right, item 23 is committee reports. We're going to start with Vice Mayor Gilb. He has a report from the CIC Board.
Yes, we're somewhat behind. We have, we're on our summer schedule, so we haven't met since our June meeting, but a lot has certainly occurred since our last meeting in terms of the small business recovery programs. And in your interim packets from June 22nd, there was a memo that kind of set forth how that program was being implemented and what was taking place, and I just wanted to share some of the highlights from that report. In May 2020, the city certainly authorized legislation that set in motion two relief initiatives, Small Business Service Partnership Program, which we call the service program, and the Small Business Expense Forgivable Loan Program, which we call the forgivable loan program. These two programs represented $700,000 in city funds that were allocated to the CIC for implementation. The city did establish a cross-departmental group to lead the internal program stand-up known as the Small Business Resource and Recovery Program, and that was led by Michelle Blair, of our Economic Development Director, and Joe Regelsberger, our Finance Director, that did an outstanding job putting this all together. The team contained over 20 city staff members that were redeployed to prioritize this effort, and they worked on it almost on a daily basis. It was important to the team, and recognized as critical to the success of the program, that there be a broad-based communication strategy with Mason small businesses. The team developed a strategic marketing campaign. They worked diligently to determine the best, most efficient ways to both inform the community of the program, and to get information to the businesses on applications and answer questions through a staff hotline Monday through Sunday during the application period. The programs were promoted through direct contact, that would be phone, email, and actually even on foot, going door-to-door. US 42 street banner was what's hung up, street median banners, social media messages, press releases, Cedar Point, Center Point ads, not Cedar Point, Center Point ads, postcard, mailers, and a dedicated website, which was reimaginemason.org, to reach the diverse portfolio of small businesses in Mason. The city's recovery program application opened on June 1st. It closed on June 10th. At the close of the application window, the city had received 107 requests for funding through a combination of one or both programs, and after removing those that were outside the city limits, the total applicant numbers were 101 total applications for about $715,000 of relief that was requested. Forty-seven of those were service agreement applications at $1,000 each, for a total of $47,000. And there were 93 forgivable loan applications ranging between $2,500 and $15,000 each, which represents about $668,000 of applications for the forgivable loan program. The program goal set a timeline to evaluate the applications, provide, and the goal was to provide business owners by June 20th regarding the application, or the status of their application, and to make the awards, that is, to get the money out into the community. Program eligibility was designed to target those businesses in the city that were most directly impacted by the stay-at-home order and focused on retail and customer-facing industry sectors. The eligibility for both programs was the same, and business applicants were encouraged to apply for both programs. As I said, 107 business applications, businesses applied, 47 fit all the program standards and were in good standing with the city, and that represented about $345,000 of the program funds. The CIC Board had to wrestle through a number of applications in terms of whether they really fit the criteria, and the Board recognized that many, if not all, businesses in Mason were impacted by COVID-19 and the stay-at-home orders, and the direction from the Board was that they wanted to provide for the program as broadly as they could. The CIC did ask that those businesses that applied, even if they didn't fit all the criteria, that they be considered for the $1,000 service agreement component of the program. Based on this direction, staff moved forward with executing service agreements and providing payments. And if all applicants were to accept service agreements and all compliance issues were resolved with the city, then approximately $560,000 in program funds would have been used. $700,000 was the total authorized. I think we heard here tonight from our city manager, kind of an update on that, that 61 businesses had actually completed the application process and were approved for about $417,500 of funding. And I look forward to hearing a wrap-up on the full implementation of the program at our next meeting. I would also note that there is a $50 gift card program that we authorized that is rolling out, and that certainly has empowered the consumers in Mason to utilize small businesses that are available in Mason, and has certainly gone to spur economic opportunities for those businesses here in the city of Mason. So, I just wanted to bring that report back to the council.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes.
So that $417,500, that's the total dollars right now that's been deployed to these companies?
Yes.
As of July 13th?
As of July 13th, yeah. Actually, I think earlier, June 20th was the target.
As of end of last week.
Okay. $417,500 as of July 13th? Or as of last, last Friday, or whatever it is? Okay. All right. That's interesting.
Anyone else? Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, you might have missed this, but what was the average that the businesses each received?
I don't have that information.
I'm sorry. That's okay.
It was a range. As I said, it was, the low was 25. I don't know what the average was. Thank you.
All good questions. It was pretty remarkable from building a website, having an application period in the CIC meeting twice or three times?
Twice.
Twice. And was there a blind process for making those selections?
Yeah, so the process in front of the CIC board was that there wasn't specific business, there was no identification of what businesses were applying, but there were industry sectors that we looked at in terms of how do we provide relief to those industries, those industry sectors. And we certainly had to wrestle through how to do that. Some of them were outside of the parameters of what the program was designed to meet. But we, I think the effort of the CIC board was to try to make the program as broad as we could make it and still, still maintain the integrity of the program.
Thank you. The, the members of the CIC were very excited at the opportunity to serve the small business community in this way. Thanks for that report. So next, we have Board of Veterans Affairs, and we have some exciting things to report on that, I think. Do we know who's reporting today?
Yeah, I can, I can report. We did meet, and we were very excited because we launched our flags. You've probably seen them around town. It's a great program. Ashley Chance used to be on the Veterans Board, and it was actually his idea. He went to another city and saw it and really liked it and thought it would be great in Mason, and I agree with him. I think it's wonderful. I'm super excited for it to expand. It, it is being managed by the, help me, because there's two of them, and I only remember.
The American Legion is the, that's who you write the check to. John Looker, the VFW is a partner in that as well.
Okay, so those two organizations are managing it. The city actually isn't. We are just hanging, hanging the flags up. And so if you have any interest in purchasing a flag, you have to either be a resident of Mason and have, and knows or have had someone who served, or the individual has to have once been a Mason resident. So it's really exciting. We are now kind of, we're done with our projects. We've done everything. And so I suggested that everyone comes to the next meeting with three different ideas of what our next project could be. And I have a couple of good ideas, but I will save that until the board meets and talks. And our next meeting is coming up. It's, well, I don't have the date with me, but it's coming up this, this month. So at nine in the morning, it's on a Thursday. So that's all I have. Do you, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, well, the American Legion's running it. You can access the application if you would like to get a sign or a banner through Imagine Mason's website. I couldn't find it on the homepage. That's my fault. But I did do a search for Mason Veterans Banner, and it then took me to the application page. But you can do it through that. That's one of the ways that the city is helping that process out.
Mr. Hanson has that readily available too, because he sent it out to me. So everybody bombarded him with some emails. He needs to do that.
Thank you for that report. I have a favor to ask of the Board of Veterans Affairs. Since you'll be meeting again and you'll have a report at the next council meeting, could you prepare a slideshow for us to see on the screens of the banners that you have hung already?
That's a great idea. We would love to do that.
They're so beautiful, and it just gives such a wonderful hometown feel and, and just a feeling of civic pride, and it's, it's just really a nice touch. I'm so glad that this program is working out. So, yeah, we'll have some great visual aids for the next meeting. Thank you. Okay, Economic Development Committee met. That's the committee that I chair, and unfortunately, I can't tell you what we spoke about in that meeting because we had to move into executive session for the purpose of land acquisition and disposition. But we are working on exciting things, as always, and we'll be meeting again soon. Is there anyone on council that would like to set up a committee meeting? Yes, council member?
Obviously, Safety Committee is going to meet, obviously, on the pools, which has been referred to the committee. I did send an email to Councilmember Gilb and Councilmember Stricula in regards to some issues, I'll say, from the fire chief or some concerns. I know we had some little previous discussion as far as future funding for a possible third squad, so on and so forth. So I really want to hold off, if I can, until our, our bookie, I mean, our finance director, excuse me, I use that term in admiration of him. He's a good guy, okay? Until he gets the, the tax returns in on the 15th. So we might have a little better direction of what we can potentially estimate resources that we will have in regards to trying to take care of some of these concerns from the chief. We'll go ahead and get into the pools and, let's see, let's see, it's the 3rd or 4th? City Manager, do you think Joe's pencil is sharp enough by the Friday, he might have some idea? Or does he need to, does he need to be counting money? How about a, how about a week from today?
He's going to be a little stressed out come Friday.
Well, I don't want any pressure on him.
He may be in a coma by Friday.
Yeah. How about sometime next week? It'll be, it'll be announced. Is that too soon?
We'll aim for the week of the 20th. We'll try and coordinate a.
Yeah, that sounds good. That sounds good.
Mayor, then?
Yes.
As chairman of the Finance Committee, it sounds like there's going to be some finance requests that we're going to need to work through, and so certainly we'll, just want to give notice that we'll, Finance Committee meeting after the Safety Committee meeting. We get their recommendations.
Yes.
Councilman Stricula and Gilb, are you available next week? Like, not on vacation or anything?
I am, well, I'm not going to announce whether I'm home or not publicly, but a couple days next week, I may be gone.
Okay, we'll work, we'll work around it. Okay.
But his bodyguard will be at the house.
There will always be.
All the time. Yeah. Yeah, and I'd like to piggyback on that schedule with the, we're due to have a legislative committee. There are a few things we need to tweak, so we, I don't have an exact agenda for you, but there are a few things we've talked about at previous meetings, and we just need to reconnect because we've been dormant for a long time because of the COVID-19 schedule that we've been on. All right, we're going to take a short break, five minutes. We'll see you back here, and we'll be here for Old and New Business. We've got another recognition of visitors on the agenda, and then we'll, we'll wrap things up with an executive session meeting. So we'll see you in five minutes.
Sounds good.
Meeting back to order. It's now time for item 23 on the agenda, which is Old and New Business. Does anybody have any old and new business to share?
Mayor, I have something very brief.
Yes.
I know we've been kind of doing a lot of, well, there's, it's just unprecedented times right now, and I know we've had a few different meetings, demonstrations, whatever you want to call it. I just, and I know sometimes, I, I don't know if I feel necessity to do this, but I would just like to, the men and women that are out there defending us, that show up every single day to go out and serve and protect us, that up here, we unequivocally support them. And I know there's, there's a bunch of stuff that's going on, and, and I mentioned the demonstrations, meetings, whatever we want to call it. I've heard nothing but positive reviews from those folks that are out there that were, you know, helping assist with, with traffic or whatever they were doing. So I just wanted to tell first responders, our, our men and women that serve on the police force, thank you so much for representing Mason, representing us with, you know, a positive attitude and with the result of that was a positive outcome. So I just wanted to say thank you. Like I said, sometimes it's, it's, it's unspoken, but I just wanted to come out and say it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have four different things. A few years ago, we had talked about a funding program that was available to Mason residents who had lead water pipes still. First, I have to say that I was very saddened to know, because I didn't know at the time that there were still households here in Mason that have lead water pipes. Well, I just recently read that the United States House passed their comprehensive infrastructure bill. It's called the Moving Forward Act, HR 2, which provides for $1.5 trillion in a provision for transportation, water, broadband, workforce training, infrastructure financing, and more. But one of the amendments that were put into the bill had to do with replacing lead water pipes, and I really haven't dug into the bill deeply yet, but I thought that that could be something maybe the city could do or the Public Utilities Committee could look into. I can, I can give it all to you, so you can.
Wait, the Public Utilities Committee has never met, so just, I just wanted to go on record to state that.
I, well, okay, maybe someone, I'll, okay, I'll look into it. I will look into it.
I'm more than happy to do it. I just love to have something to do. I'd love to do that. I'd love to help.
I, I will do that project then.
Councilmember Chance, just a reminder, you're the chair, but.
So, because I think it could be good, there could be money in that bill that we could probably bring to our residents, possibly. I'm not sure, but like I said, I haven't really dug into it. But if we can, you know, I, I just remember that it being very expensive for a homeowner to change out those pipes. And if we can find funding for them to help them do it, I think it would be a great thing to do. It just breaks my heart to think that, that children are drinking water out of these lead pipes. So that was the first thing. The other one was, I've spent about a year, the last year and a half, working on the issue of advanced refunding. I've talked about it numerous times throughout the last year or two. I've worked with State Representative Steve Shabbett, trying to educate him on how the changes from the 2017 Tax Cut and Job Acts removed the ability for local governments to refinance bonds at a lower rate while keeping the bonds tax exempt. In 2017, this change has actually cost municipalities millions of dollars that could have been used towards infrastructure. Well, there's a new bipartisan bill, which that's exciting in itself, has been introduced in the U.S. Senate called the Lifting Our Communities Through Advanced Liquidity for Infrastructure, which is also known as Local Infrastructure Act. And it has been introduced to the U.S. Senate. So I'm really excited that this is finally being addressed and possibly going to be passed so we can get back to, you know, how it used to be where we can refinance our bonds. So that is exciting news. I'll keep you posted on that. And then I have some concerns that I wanted to talk about. I have some concerns with how the city does land deals. As you know, council goes into executive session to discuss the sale and purchase of land, which I think is a good idea to do. I think it's important for confidentiality reasons to have this process, so I do respect the process. But what concerns me is that if deals are done that I don't feel are good for the city or that are not a wise use of taxpayer dollars, I am not really able to come out and talk about it. We should be able to, you know, come out of executive session before we vote and talk where the public can see the issues at hand, if, if a council member has issues. So I have a couple of questions with this. The first one is, today, we're going to be in executive session, and when we leave executive session, are we planning on voting on anything today?
I do not have any legislation prepared for adoption after the meeting. And I would not expect anything.
Okay. What I would like to propose is that going forward, when we have executive session, that we do it before our meetings. Say, for instance, we start at 6:00, and at a courtesy to the residents, we let them know that, you know, from 6:00 to 7:00, we will be in executive session so that nobody shows up and waits an hour, and, you know, have the executive session for that amount of time. This will hold us more accountable because now we have people in the audience listening to our votes and what we've decided and what we're doing. We have a camera there, which people can refer back to and watch later when they're not able to watch during the meeting. I just think it holds us accountable, and I think it's important because for transparency purposes, if a council member has concerns with the land deal that is going down, they should be able to vocalize it, and they should be able to make a public to the residents so that the residents are aware of what's happening in their town and with their taxpayer dollars. So I would, I would like to, I guess, have a vote on changing it to have the executive session before council.
That's something we can look at in our legislative committee. One of our goals this year has been to clean up Chapter 125, which, as I recall, was not legislation that you were on board with as far as transparency with real estate transactions. But I have no problem with scheduling executive session early if we can accommodate that. But just so the public knows, when we do come out after executive session, the cameras go back on, and you have every opportunity for council discussion if we do take something up to a vote. And, you know, one of the problems that I talked about when I was working through Chapter 125 a year and two years ago is that sometimes we do have legislation that's not listed on the agenda after an executive session meeting. And so we agreed that we would keep cameras on and record that process, so that's available for the public to see online. And, and that it doesn't just happen in the dark of night with no record of it other than what might appear in the minutes at the next meeting. So we will look into that.
I would like to untell, because I don't know how long it's going to be for us to look into that and have action, so.
Well, we're going to work on it in July.
Sorry, talking. So if we could vote on that tonight, I would like to do that going forward, that we have our executive sessions beforehand. I just think it's more effective, it's more transparent, and it holds us accountable. So would anyone like to second that motion? To have them, the meetings, executive session meetings start at 6:00 versus at, you know, 9:00 or 10:00 or whenever we're done with our meetings?
I mean, is this all we're voting on? Is this a scheduling issue?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd prefer before because look at tonight. I mean, it's going to be, what, depending on how long we go, it could be 10:30, 11:00 before we get home. So if we did it prior to, I don't think there should be any.
And I'm sure ICRC would be happy because then they don't have to stay around. Because there's, there's numerous land transactions that have taken place that haven't been on ICRC. And it's so late at night that to come out here before a vote and have a long conversation on a land transaction that might have some issues, it really doesn't get done.
But question for.
I have a procedural question. We don't have a law director here to ask, but I'm thinking we need to vote to go into executive session so that we'd almost need to have council meeting called to order, roll call taken.
Right.
And then go into executive session.
Right. And that's where I was saying, yep, and that's where I was saying, you know, we'll, we'll post it that, yes, council's going to have it at 6:00.
You're only asking for the council meeting to start at 6:00.
Correct. But having the courtesy to let the public know that the first hour of the council meeting will be executive session, so people don't show up and just sit there and wait.
Mayor?
Yes, council member.
Going into legis, the legislative committee, what, what were you wanting to review in that committee?
Well, I was listening to her request, and as far as timing goes, before starting executive session earlier, starting our meetings an hour early, I don't have a problem with that. I don't know if we want to be so locked in with it that, well, I don't want to, I would like to do that with the understanding that there might be times when we need to go into it at the end of a meeting as well, to have some flexibility there with scheduling. However, I'm fine with it starting earlier because these nights do get long, and by the time we get to executive session, sometimes we all have low blood sugar insanity and we're exhausted from focusing for so many hours in a row and sitting. So I think that is a great proposal. As far as Chapter 125, we wanted to go through there and make some tweaks and just have a chance to analyze it as a team and bring that forth to council. There were some criticisms of it, but it did pass, and so that's always been a goal of mine, and I've been really open about that. So just listening to the feedback. And then I think, were you, were you meaning as far as legislation goes, sometimes we vote after executive session? Is that what you were asking about?
I just want to have clarity from if we're voting on a scheduling issue, if that's.
If it's.
Which, if the scheduling issue is fine, if there's other things that you want to look at in legislative committee that.
Yes. Yes, so both, I don't know that.
Fine, so we can vote on the scheduling. Fine, so we can vote on the scheduling.
Do we need to legislate the schedule and have a vote on it?
I would suggest if that's the direction council would like to go, that as a, I don't think you can legislate it or legislate future councils, future councils, when enough council members vote to go into executive session, that's what occurs as a matter of course. I don't think you can bind yourselves, you know, from voting again. If you, if what you want to express via that motion is that your preference, that whenever land acquisition is to be considered, that the default is that executive sessions be scheduled in advance of the regular meeting, I think that's a direction that we can follow, and it doesn't try and bind you to something I don't think you could bind.
Mayor?
Yes.
Quick comment. I'm a fan of executive session because I think it's just like anything else. I view the city as a business, and we have to compete. And there's things that we go into executive session, there's a reason why we do that. It's not to be, you know, to do any stuff in the dark of night, or, but it's giving us the best chance to win as a community for our economic development team, which I always say I think is, you know, second to none. So I'm, I think there might be some unseen implications, and I would like to possibly vet that out a little bit. I definitely like starting earlier, but understanding what, if there are implications that we're not seeing that. So I'm all about a 6:00 start opposed to waiting till 7:00, and then, like I said, nights like this, getting done at 10:30. So I'm all about that, but I don't know if I'm ready to vote for that tonight to say, let's do it now.
I guess my concern is that I don't want to be voting on crucial topics that, with high dollar amounts, after, you know, at like 10:00 at night when nobody is paying attention, because it's a problem. I mean, there's stuff that could be getting passed that shouldn't be getting passed. And I think that it's important that the residents are aware, and, you know, doing it so late at night and doing it so quickly, we've never sat down after and had a long conversation about anything. It's usually a quick vote, and we're done. And sometimes I don't think that that's necessarily the right way to do it. I'm not saying all the time, but I'm saying sometimes. Unless we have executive session but not vote on anything until the next council meeting, which could prolong things too long sometimes, too.
Councilmember Bradburn.
I don't have a problem with it. Conceptually, it sounds good, but I'm thinking, we go in executive session, we come out, and we cool our heels until the public shows up at 7:00?
If we have executives.
You see, so we go in executive session for 30 minutes, and we made a decision, but then technically, we don't go ahead and proceed any further until this 7:00 PM schedule?
Correct. But if Eric knows it's only going to be a quick executive session, then schedule it at 6:30 versus...
There's no such thing as a quick executive session.
Well, then, 6:00.
Typically, can I say a couple of things? I'm sorry.
Sure. Eric.
Typically, no, I just lost one of my things. What we try and do when we have executive sessions in advance is we do try and build that into the public notice. It's not, council determines when you go into executive session. So we will use language like, council will meet in public session, you know, at 6:00 PM. It's anticipated that we'll immediately go into executive session. But enough of you don't vote to go into executive session, then that's not what we're doing. We also try and say, it's anticipated that executive session will end at 7:00 PM when we will return to public session. What we don't control is how long you talk or don't talk. So as a courtesy, if we wrap up the executive session at 6:30, I would be one saying, okay, well, we told the public, you know, 7:00 PM is when the public session, we should probably go into recess until 7:00 PM. And that's what we would, that's what we've done in the past. I just forgot my other comment. Oh, for the audience, one thing to make clear, and I think sometimes when we talk about it gets confused, no decisions are made in executive session, no votes are taken in executive session. To the Vice Mayor's point, you can't even vote to go into executive session. You have to be in a public meeting like this in order to determine whether you're going back there. You have discussion back there, and you may be making up your minds, or you may be, you know, getting a sense of where everyone's at, but there are no votes that are held there. To do anything on land acquisition or anything that would have been in executive session, you have to come back out here, you have to be in public session where anyone, now, I think the point that's being made here is often in reality how that occurs, is by the time we have a lengthy executive session discussion, you come out here to take action, these people have gotten bored and went home, they had other things to do. ICRC, we haven't kept them for two hours, you know, so they may have gone home. And so the only record of what happens after the executive session, which is typically brief, because you just take a vote, is in the minutes. I think that's the sense here. But for the public, what is important to understand, no votes, no decisions are made in executive session. They have to be made in public session on any issue, whether it be land acquisition, personnel, the actual vote, the actual decision is made in public.
Anything else on that?
Are we voting? Do you want to vote, or do you...
We don't need to vote, but what we can do, it sounds like we all are amenable to accommodating your request whenever we possibly can, so staff can schedule it that way, and I think that's great.
And maybe if we go into an executive session, that we, if the vote can hold off, we can hold off so that the public can hear it.
Yep.
And if ICRC is not here, we probably shouldn't have the vote.
Right. And typically, Denny has stayed late for us so that we can record the vote, and that was a policy we informally agreed upon. I think the onset maybe of the last election cycle, I feel like Councilmember Hunter Law brought that up. He wanted the cameras rolling when we came back out after executive session. Okay, so I'm really glad that you brought this up. I couldn't agree with you more. We have some room for improvement in that area.
I have one more. I would like to take a vote. It was in our packet, midterm packet regarding Zoom meetings. I think it's important that we continue with our Zoom meetings so that our residents can see live, real time, what's going on, especially with the COVID pandemic. A lot of people are not comfortable coming into the chambers, and this will also allow for them to be able to speak and listen real time. So it's to my understanding that we have to take a vote tonight to continue Zoom meetings for the public.
Okay. Do you mean abandon the in-person meeting, or do a combination of the two, the live stream so people can stream in?
Well, I personally would like to abandon in-person meetings and continue on the Zoom, but I think I might be outvoted on that. So this will be in chambers with a Zoom still out there for the individuals to chime in.
Can I add maybe just two clarifications? There's probably two elements to that. One is, and if we just use this meeting as a template, what you would call live streaming the meeting, not necessarily Zoom meeting, which is that brand, but where we would work with ICRC and through cable access, what we're talking about here is live and folks, you know, on the TVs. That's one component, and, you know, merits discussion. The second component is what I would call kind of a dial-in option, which I think is what you're referring to as Zoom, where someone who's watching at home also has the ability to dial in, you know, through the web or whatever, and then be able to have their voice heard here.
Correct.
As well as in the public. Those are two, they could both be done, or one can be done and not the other.
I want the ability for the public to see the council meetings live, live stream, with the ability to engage in recognition of visitors. So without having to force them to come into chambers during a pandemic.
Okay, so I believe that means we have to invest in new equipment.
Which I think is good. I think it's fine. I think it's important that the public is, you know, aware of what's going on within our city and engaging.
So is it possible for staff to prepare a proposal for us for the August meeting?
We actually don't need one. I've already looked into that. We can vote on it right now.
What are we voting on?
We're voting on the ability to, while we're in chamber, to have Zoom, correct? Am I correct in saying, it's still considered Zoom, right?
That may not be the platform we use. I think live streaming and dial-in are probably the best.
Okay. So we are voting in, so when we're in the chambers, we can have live stream and dial-in for our residents.
Is there a cost associated with that in this vote?
Well, there is some cost to get that to work from a, from the microphone standpoint, but it's, it's within what the...
The information was in your earlier packet. There was a cost estimate. The technology isn't, the technology's available, it's really just in these chambers to avoid the feedback issue of getting a dial-in in this. We need, we need some equipment to enhance that. It is not, I, I'm going to say about $5,000, and I think we were, you know, to make sure and cover all of our bases, you need to do a little bit of coordination with ICRC and the equipment itself to make it work.
Vice Mayor Gilb, I saw your hand.
Say it would be nice to know what the costs are, but I think we'd, $5,000, is that a COVID-19 grant money that we could certainly tap into to say, part of our $860,000 of CARES Act money, maybe, directed to...
Yeah.
I think that's a stupendous idea.
Excuse me, sorry. Anyone else have a question or comment on that topic?
Can I get a second?
Hold on, because I have one. Oh, goodness, what is my question?
I just, a point of clarification, some of this goes to, the reason we were able to hold Zoom meetings is if the motion intends that to continue indefinitely or to be, to coincide with the state legislation that allowed us to hold virtual meetings at all. Because keep in mind that dial-in option, right now, because of a state exemption, we were, public officials were able to do it virtually under certain conditions. That expires in December unless it's extended because of the pandemic or state action. I just wouldn't want mistaken that council members are able to dial in indefinitely and have it be a public meeting. That will expire at some point.
I have a couple more questions on how that would work. Are you proposing as well that some council members could be present on the dais and some could be zooming in, and is that allowed?
That's what I was speaking to. That type of setup could be allowed until December.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you meant with visitors.
You, under certain conditions, you can hold a public meeting with the public officials, like our Zoom meetings. So we could have some folks here, some members zooming in because of the current exception, because of the COVID situation. That is not going to forever be the case.
But, you know, it's kind of important, too, to be able to do that because if some, if someone on this council has been exposed, they shouldn't be up here. And, but they shouldn't have to miss the meeting when we have the ability to do the Zoom function.
Okay, I've got another question.
I mean, we can either do that, or we can just continue to have Zoom meetings until, you know, the December 31 cutoff, which I think is actually wise because, you know, people are being exposed right now.
I'm going to just say that I really dislike the Zoom format, even though it's very convenient because you don't have to travel to the building, but I much prefer this format. I would think if you're ill, you could just take a sick day if you can't make the meeting on the dais. But I'm trying to visualize navigating, chairing a Zoom meeting with council members on screens and in person, and that, I mean, I'm sure that I could figure it out, but it just doesn't sound very easy right now. But I'm okay with having visitors dial in, and then we'd have to have some understanding about managing which portion of the meeting that works best, and setting some guidelines and rules when we recognize the visitors with the Zoom format. So, I mean, I'm open to trying new things. I just don't want to set a rule right now that we can't live up to or that becomes just so difficult or unmanageable. But I do, I do think it's okay if there are people that are disabled, they can't come in, or they're, they really have something they need to speak to.
So can we vote on this, please? Can I get a second?
Is there a motion? I'm not sure.
Yeah, so there is a motion on the floor to, starting in August, to have the ability for, well, council member will be in chamber unless, I guess, determined otherwise, but the ability to live stream our council meetings and to have the ability for our residents to dial in. So can I get a second?
Just to clarify, so residents dialing in, not council members?
Well, in the event that, I mean, we have the ability to do this. The governor allowed us to do this as of December 31st.
Correct. Well, then we would call a Zoom meeting if something catastrophic occurred, yes. But I don't like the idea of combining council members in person and Zoom. I don't think that's appropriate.
Members, I just said live stream and dial in.
Yeah, I, so I just have a quick question. So Eric, it sounds like you guys have looked into this, right? And I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you. I think that we should, given the circumstances of, you know, we all are witnessing right now, that if some people aren't comfortable coming here, they should be able to live stream it. And we've looked into that, and we have that function, and $5,000, if we want to allocate to $836,000, now we have $831,000. We can set up to do that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I would second that, then.
Thank you.
I would move to amend your, just to limit it to this period of the governor's order, I think December 31st, it expires. I would suggest this live stream could expire in conjunction with that, and we can take a look at that time whether we want to extend it.
Why?
I would move to amend your motion just to have it sunset basically on...
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Because that motion takes precedent at the moment. Is there a second to that motion made by Councilmember Gilb to sunset it on December 31st? Okay, the motion fails. So we have the motion on the floor.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I want to kind of take Vice Mayor Gilb's amendment and just change it that the dial-in option sunsets on December 31st, but the live streaming would continue.
Yes, I think that's what he means. Yes.
No, he specifically mentioned live stream.
Oh, I'm sorry. So let's try again.
Yeah, so I would make a motion to amend it that the live streaming continues indefinitely because I think that's an important piece. I think the residents have appreciated that. And in the spirit of transparency, I think it's good that they can tap in from anywhere. But I do think that dial-in should be based upon the governor's orders of those options because I think it's important that, we want to see you guys, we want to see you come in and talk to us. So I think it's important that that takes place. So having just the dial-in option sunset at December 31st.
Okay, so Josh, can you officially offer that motion, and then we'll...
I'll make a motion to amend that the dial-in option expires or sunsets with the Ohio Vice Code for the, what we're doing.
Is there a second?
The emergency.
I would second his.
Okay, let's call the roll on that motion.
Councilmember Strickula.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb.
Yes.
Mayor Grossman.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and I'm going to ask again for some clarity because I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. Is your motion proposing that the dial-in option is only for residents? Or only for visitors, not council members?
Correct.
Till December 31st. Okay, so council members, if we have an in-person meeting, council members are expected to be on the dais, not to dial in.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Anything else? Shall we call the roll?
Point of clarification, one which may be minor, and I don't remember the exact wording, because you linked it to the state action, that expire, it expires with the emergency declaration, but no later than December 31st or whatever that date is. So there, if the emergency declaration ends in September, so would your motion here on the dial-in, just so everyone's clear on that. I think the sense of this, and having talked with Jeff earlier, the motion you pass here will likely then be translated into a rule change that would be presented to you more formally at the next council meeting. So we would set up the next council meeting to, or we would endeavor to, if the technology works, to follow whatever you adopt here. I think Jeff will then want a formal rule language, which would include things like what we've been doing through the Zoom meetings as far as establishing time limits for the dial-in. You can always change those, but just a matter of procedure and constitutional rights, you have to have something set up there. So I guess what I'm saying, you pass this motion, expect it to be translated into a rule change that you would adopt formally.
Okay, thank you. So we should call the roll. I don't know. We called the roll on the motion to amend, which was approved, that passed unanimously. So now we call the roll on the original motion as amended.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Gilb.
Yes.
Mayor Grossman.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn.
Yes.
Councilmember Strickula.
Okay. Anyone else have any older new business?
Mayor, just, I think we heard in the city manager's report some information about the $50 gift card program, how that is...
I think we heard in the city manager's report some information about the $50 gift card program, how that is being implemented. But I, I kind of lost that in the translation. I'm wondering if you could revisit how that program is rolling out and what that looks like.
And we'll have more full information in August because there are, especially on the sewer component. As we were gathering emails, there will be another wave of distributions. Now, we kind of got the first easiest fastest wave moving. So if you look at all in, and this would also include, you know, I bought one for my friend as a personal transaction. We bought some for Red Rhythm Boom as, as prizes. Okay, so you've got kind of that all in effect. There are, call it about approaching $10,000, $10,000 e-gift cards that have been sent or purchased by the committee. So there's those, those gift cards.
$50 gift card?
No, $10,000, I bought one on Cheepso, my friend got a $10 gift card. And you, you got a $100 gift card for your friend. So I, I don't have that dollar amount there on how much was, you know, how much has been purchased. I do have a dollar amount of how much has been redeemed. And that's nearly $50,000, again, this is as of last week, where, you know, my friend went and spent his. Redeemed, so a lot more of that has been distributed. And that is one thing, one, some of the questions we get, when you, when you get your sewer gift card, get a gift card from the city, it has an expiration date on it. And there's two ways to look at this question. From the city's perspective, if, if one of our Red Rhythm Boom winners does not redeem that gift card, it doesn't cost the city, that money doesn't evaporate, it's not wasted. We pay a small transaction fee, but the city just didn't have to spend that. That's one of the advantages financially to this program. But to the residents that received that card, if they never redeemed that card, it didn't go to help any business either. So they're, they're not, they're benefiting the ci, city because we don't have to spend the money, but neither is it going to a business to help the business.
But we didn't collect that revenue either, though. So the city, right, for the gift cards, the sewer gift cards, we, we said $0 for the sewer. So we still didn't collect the revenue, though. So it's still, there's still dollars out of our pocket.
But there's, there's two components of the program. We, we, we did not have a sewer, we will not have a sewer rate, and that is foregone revenue. So that's money that we'll never see, yes. And that's, and that each, each sewer customer will see because they won't have to pay a bill they otherwise would have paid. Separate, you know, part of the same rollout, but separate was the gift card program. So each of those sewer customers saves some money because they don't have to pay their sewer that month, plus they get a $50 gift card. If they don't redeem that gift card by the expiration date, it didn't benefit them. Neither did hurt the city financially, but didn't benefit them or the, or the business.
It hurt us, we didn't collect money.
No, it only, we only pay for the e-gift card if it's consumed. But yes, we for, we decided to forego revenue in the month of July with the sewer bill so that every residence, every, every household or sewer customer has cash they don't have to pay. And we are encouraging them to spend that cash at a local Mason business. But also, if they communicate with us and we can correspond with them via email, each sewer customer, household is eligible, or do a $50 e-gift card that we only pay for if the gift card is swiped and redeemed. So it's not wasted, we didn't pay $50 and we sent it to them, and if they don't swipe it.
I get it, but my point is, we normally collect about $890,000 of sewer bills monthly, correct?
Right.
So when we put that down to zero, we did not collect $890,000, correct?
Right.
And we've turned that $890,000 into $50,000 right now.
No.
What I'm hearing.
No.
Two programs.
Let me, let me clarify, let me, just in my head, I can reconcile it. So we have $890,000 that we, we foregot, we didn't, we did not collect that, correct? So then we have to send, residents have to send an email to the city, and the city turns around and says, oh, thank you, here's $50.
Yes, basically.
$50 e-gift card.
And of that $50 that we have sent out so far, we have translated that to $50,000 that have been used, correct?
Been redeemed, yes.
All right, so where am I confused? Why, 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 no, I'm not confused, why, why does that sound confusing?
They were, the waiver of the sewer fee was just a $50 or average $50 bill for people with the intent, with the hope that they would use their $50 savings at a local Mason business and get that money back into the economy. So some incentive in that regard. In addition to that, we funded our own $50 gift card program. And if all of those cards are redeemed, I'm not sure how much, so if there was 100% participation and redemption, I don't know what that, is that a half man?
I think it was, we, we said $500,000.
Another $500 actual dollars out of our pocket, yes. But what he's saying is we've only spent $50,000 to this point. So people need to get out and use their $50 gift card.
I, I get that, but, okay. But through the program, we've also lost out on $890,000 of revenue.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm good, that's all, we don't need to go any further.
We benefited the community, hoping that they would use those dollars that they don't have to pay to the city to support local small businesses.
Big hope, but I, I like it, I, yeah.
So the logic was that we would try to stimulate the supply side by getting funds to businesses, right? But we also wanted to stimulate the demand side. And by stimulating the demand side, that helped us avoid transferring wealth from one portion of the population to the other. So we were trying to find the balance there and create stimulus because we also know that many families are restructuring their finances due to COVID-19. So we were able to do a program that we hope will supply and stimulate supply and demand as well as assist these local businesses with something they wouldn't have gotten otherwise. And most local jurisdictions are not doing anything to support local small businesses with funds, with public funds. They're doing things to accommodate things, but most, the reality is most small businesses can't, or most, I'm sorry, most local governments just can't. But we were blessed and in a situation where we could come up with a program that I felt was more comprehensive. And it did pass unanimously, the sewer project and the e-gift card project, by the way.
I don't have to.
Okay, good, all right. Josh, sorry, Councilmember Stricula, yes?
A quick question for Mr. Hanson. Mr. Hanson, if, I've gotten, a couple of residents have said, hey, I haven't gotten my e-gift card yet. Who should they contact, or could you let, let them know who they should contact and, at least publicly? I keep telling them to call the city, so they're probably just.
Call the city, call, I don't, I, I just called the main number and they'll be directed.
Just let them know about the e-gift card or the sewer rebate e-gift card program?
Yes, there's two, we had a number of emails for existing customers, they should have already received that. Others, and I'm in the other group, got a postcard a week ago, I think, last Monday, telling me, hey, we don't have your email, if you want this, give us your email. So my wife sent her email in. I won't get my gift card probably for another three or four weeks because I'm in that second wave. So there's going to be some unevenness to that because we want to get it out as fast as possible to the bulk. If people have questions, call, okay? And the one thing I wanted to clarify that maybe got lost in some of the discussion, the question I get, folks get one of those gift cards and, and maybe in a burst of enthusiasm, they want to be supportive of small businesses. So they think, I'm not going to spend it because then the small businesses save the money. That is wrong. It doesn't harm the city, but the city doesn't want those, we want them spent. So I'm really encouraging folks, you're not doing anyone a favor except the city that has actually built it in and can afford that. We want those gift cards spent. So get those out into the community, spend them. They don't have to spend it all in one place. And I think that's some of what's going on here, folks have kind of tested it out. So they went and spent $5 on something, then they're going to spend something else. There are expirations on these, the ones that, through the sewer program. So get out and spend them within the next, you know, two, three months. It's not doing anyone a favor, least of all the small businesses. The business doesn't get that cash until you, it's like a MasterCard. If you throw it away, no, no one got it. If you take it to the business, it now counts as a revenue for them. That was my clarification.
I'm so glad you asked that question, Councilmember Stricula. There is also a link on the website, reimagine, reimaginemason.org about that. But I'm wondering if maybe we can put a button or something on the front page or homepage of imaginemason.org? Or, I don't know how difficult that would be, just to take you to the link where you basically click on something and you enter your email address and you just say, I, I haven't received my gift card. And then something I think is magically going to happen.
People to call.
Just call.
There is a certain amount of data management to this and try, you know, my wife sent her email in and then I sent my email in and now we have to kind of tabulate what the sewer account is. We don't, we don't need more emails, we need more calls of folks of accounts that haven't gotten theirs yet.
All right, I like that human touch. Give us a call, all right. Anybody else have old and new business? All right, I have a statement I prepared about that small business recovery legislation because I had a feeling there'd be some comments and questions about it tonight based on some cues I got from social media. So I'm just going to read that to you. When ordinance 43 was proposed by Councilmember Stricula, council was asked to gift $500,000 to a private nonprofit framed as a partnership between the city and the Maids Chamber CDC to provide grants for direct small business recovery in Mason. And I appreciated his heart behind that and the heart behind the chamber in getting us started and addressing that need. These grants, according to ordinance 43 in its original form, would be administrate, administered by the CDC along with volunteers selected by the CDC on an anonymous selection committee with sole discretion over allocation of funds to take place over a five-day period.
Point of order, Mayor, if I may, you've brought up the anonymous selection committee multiple times. That selection committee being anonymous was anonymous to the applicants.
Okay.
Mentioned a couple of times, so.
Right, it eventually was.
A clarification, which has been brought up multiple times.
So, tell you what.
It's not anonymous to the city and we could have put anybody on that, right? So just a point of clarification, thank you.
That was part of the term, terms that I understood it to be at the time that we were considering it. And I'd like for you to wait until I finish my statement, take some notes and that's something I'd like to talk about.
Dead horse, can we just end the meeting, please?
No.
I'd like to take.
I'm going to finish my statement and then.
Make a motion to end the meeting. Can I get a second?
All right, then we have to call the roll. I have a brief statement that I can read. Okay, call the roll, please. We can't adjourn, actually, we have more things on our agenda, but we'll call the roll. Could you revise your motion?
To go into executive session.
I, I'd like to end the meeting and go into an executive session. I'd like to adjourn the meeting and go into an executive session.
The appropriate motion, if you wish to go into executive session, be go into executive session now.
I'd like to go into executive session now.
I, I second that.
Hey, let's call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gilb.
No.
Mayor Grossman.
No.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn.
No.
Councilmember Stricula.
No.
Thank you. All right, I'll continue with this brief statement. I'll get through it as quickly as I can. I was called out multiple times in the beginning of the meeting and I've seen many comments on social media. And so I wanted to take some time to address it and hopefully set some of your concerns at ease. And to address Councilmember Stricula's concerns about anonymous selection committee, I'm quoting the agreements that we were given and I understand that you.
It was a point of clarification.
A point of clarification, thank you. I will continue and hopefully things will make more sense. So these grants, according to the terms of the proposals, would have been administrator, administered by the CDC along with volunteers selected by the CDC on an anonymous selection committee with sole discretion over allocation of funds to take place over a five-day period. They estimated a 48-hour application window with two to three days to process the applications and distribute the funds. Ordinance 2020-43 in its original form also allowed the CDC to establish its pay-it-forward policy with the understanding that those rewarded grants by the CDC would later be repaid back to the CDC, not the City of Mason, if those grantees were able to do so. While it's true that there were some criteria set in place to the proposal, the original legislation, in my view, lacked guaranteed government oversight on the front and back ends as well as guarantees and metrics on how grant amounts would be formulated and distributed fairly and equitably after a 48-hour application period. Four of us members did not find the original terms of ordinance 2020-43 to be suitable for the use of public funds or best suitable. The majority of this council rejected the proposal in its original form and passed far better legislation. The majority of council reworked the proposals made by Member Stricula and the Maids CDC and as supported by Councilmember Chance and Councilmember Nelson. We made proposals for city-run programs in partnership with Mason's CIC or Community Investment Corporation while incorporating many of the ideas and goals of the original proposal. We met in livestreamed open meetings as economic development and finance committees with our economic development and finance directors. And we discussed ways to provide direct support on the supply and demand side of this terrible economic crisis brought on by COVID-19. We came up with a program that provided over $2 million in demand side, supply, demand and supply side stimulus to 10,000 households and nearly 1,000 businesses with waived sewer July fees along with a $50 e-gift card sent to sewer customers to spend at over 70 participating local businesses, which I think now is growing closer to 100. The programming also includes $700,000, as we mentioned earlier, in interest, in a combination of interest-free forgivable loans and service agreements to provide direct aid to local businesses determined by a system of eligibility and formulated metrics. As of now, the CIC program has mostly been executed, right? In addition, on April 11th, council adopted amended ordinance 43 authorizing $160,000 in a service contract fee to partner with the Maids CDC on a gift card program. It's my understanding that the Maids CDC is still finishing up the execution of that program, but much of it has already been distributed, right? Ultimately, ordinance 2020-43 is amended and ordinance 2020-51 and 52 are also adopted unanimously by council on April 13th and May 11th, respectively. The outcome is that council passed far better legislation with more funding, wider reach, government oversight, transparency, formulated metrics, and heart to help bolster our small businesses and overall economic ecosystem in an unprecedented recession. To date, we have served our local business community with nearly $50,000 in redeemed e-gift cards that we discussed just now, which are prepaid MasterCards. There, we've also, I think, distributed $417,000 in forgivable loans and approximately 20, no, $47,000 in small customizable service agreements. And we're closing in on the $160,000 initiative with the CDC who converted the gift card legislation we adopted to a type of spend-one-get-one voucher system. I'm extremely proud of and appreciative of our collaboration with staff, Mason's Community Investment Corporation, and our local business community who have participated and helped promote these programs serving over 100 local businesses that I know of. I have not found evidence of any more innovative and aggressive local government small business recovery programs per capita in the nation. I'm also willing to bet that you can't find better city staff like ours than our CIC members and small business recovery team of cross-department Mason staff members anywhere in the world. And that's all I have. Yes.
Government oversight, we're four months later and we've, we distributed $514,000. We already know, we already know that we have, how many people inside the city that was dedicated to this? 20, is that right, Eric? 20 on our staff that's been focused on this, so let's look at that cost. Guarantee that's over $14,000. And I've said it, and this is, this is where I get so upset, like you paint that picture and we're sitting here and I'm, I'm reading this and I really can't believe you continue down this rabbit hole. Is the CIC met three times in 20 years? And they're the ones that are going to be able to control this and do a better job than our chamber that is in the city, day in and day out, working with our small businesses. So I'm sick and tired of you sitting here painting this picture of 514,000. We created a website, has anyone ever done that? It's not cheap. We've had 20 people from our staff paid full-time attention to this. We've had 20 people from our staff paid full-time attention to this. If we look at that over three months, I bet that cost is $150,000, $200,000. Well, I understand they're on salary, but there's, we're in a pandemic. And I've heard it, I don't know, if I heard it once, I heard it 24 times, that our staff did not have time to do this, that they were at capacity with other things. So that's where, I am sorry for my frustration here, but it just, you, you paint this like weird, well, and then you sit there and say you had much better legislation. No, the better legislation is getting the government out of the way, allowing people to understand what small businesses, how they operate. I understand if you don't. I understand if you don't. I understand if anyone on this council doesn't. But the people that do are the chamber, and they know that immediate cash is so much more valuable than four months later, and now we've distributed $514,000. And we've had staff, we've had all these extra expenses, and, and I just can't sit back and let you read this piffy little dissertation that is just blatantly false. And that's all I have, I mean, I...
You tell me what's false about it.
I mean, what, what, you want me to, what we point out where the first thing that was false is that you said you had much better legislation. I think we talked about tonight, 2020-46, you were prepared to pass that without any details. That's not better legislation.
You received the details in ordinances 51 and 52.
It's just so bad, this is what...
Anything else that was false?
It's blatantly, it's just, I mean, it's, it's just...
No, you need to give me specifics, please, so I can correct that.
That's what you do.
Could you give me the specifics so I can correct the falsities?
The biggest false thing is that you had much better legislation.
Okay, then that's a matter of opinion.
Here's another thing.
That wasn't your legislation, and that came way after. I'm not going to be quiet.
I would love to see what it cost the city. I would love to see the 20 full-time employees that worked on this, and if we want to break it down, what they make, and we'll break it down to a quarter, because that's what we worked on, it, three months. Let's break that down. And I want to know the cost that we had to pay lawyers? I want to know the cost that we had to pay that lawyer to come on and give us his little, and when, I forget what it was, I think it came back with 1.1 billion results when I searched small business loans. 1.1 billion dollars, and here we are, this big arrogant government entity saying, well, we can, we can do it so much better than anyone else, let's get our own person in here. So that's what I'm saying, like, what, what, we're just, it's just, this stuff has to stop. And I don't know when it's going to stop, it's going to continue on, and I apologize to the city that, and our constituents, that we have to deal with this.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you saying that the CIC and the economic development staff and the business recovery team wasn't competent, or...
If, if you want to, no, I'm not going to say they're not competent, because what did I say earlier in my meeting? Our economic development team is second to none in economic development.
Yes.
Do they understand the looking at, at loans and understanding what small businesses need? No insult to our economic development team, but they're not out there every day talking to them. They're not. They're not.
If I could weigh in, you know, I, I look back at April 13, when we authorized $160,000 to be distributed by the CDC to the small business community, and it didn't, that never materialized.
Because they repeatedly...
It took forever to get that.
Because they repeatedly said that's not what they want to do.
But that's...
They repeatedly said that. That's not what they need, that's not what our, that's not what our small businesses need. All right? That was very clear, very concise, from the CDC, saying that's not the route to go. We should be a better entity and listen to them, because you don't know it better than them, is that what you're saying?
That was unanimous of this council to say, let's get that $160,000 out.
Well, yeah, because we got to show good faith on something.
Disappointed that the CDC did not get that money out the way they said they, that it needed to be out there.
Because they were playing a game they didn't want to play. They were playing a game that was manipulated by a bunch of bureaucrats that was wrong.
So by reason of their failure to get that money out there, I think it was appropriate that we use the CIC to get the money out, which it has already gotten out.
They were never designed to get that money out there. That wasn't the program that they were going to put in.
Okay, we need to wait to be acknowledged by the chair.
Mason made it up and dropped it on their lap and said, figure this out.
They've met three times in 20 years.
That was...
They've met three times in 20 years. We had an old council member still on the board that's never even been resolved to this day.
I'll just have to...
No, she was not on the board.
She was too, up until when?
She did not attend the meetings. Her term expired at the time of her leaving office.
Her name was still on there.
She just wasn't replaced. We went over that in open session.
Okay.
In detail.
Can we move forward, please?
We can move forward, and just so the public understands, this is, this was a mechanism that we could do, and four people agreed on the mechanism of the CIC. Three people disagreed. And that's what democracy's all about. And so to assign motives of corruption, or being government bureaucrats, or being inappropriate, or whatever it is that you guys have come up with, it, it's, it's not fair, it's not true, and ultimately, it hurts the public.
We didn't come up with it.
You're interrupting, hang on.
It was on Zoom.
Yes, it was on Zoom, and what it all boiled down to is you had four members who disagreed with donating...
Okay, I would like to end this...
You're not acknowledged by the chair.
You know, it doesn't matter if I'm a...
You must be acknowledged by the chair.
This is ridiculous, we're not going to continue to fight about this in every meeting. I have things to do. Got children at home, and to sit here and listen to this crap all the time is absolutely...
Member Nelson, you are out of order.
I would like to end this meeting right now and go into executive session.
I'm feeling like you don't want the public to hear the things that I have to say in your trans silent voice.
I think the public is done hearing the things that you have to say. It is time to move forward.
So here, it's important to understand that what it boiled down to is that four people did not agree with giving $500,000 to a private charity to redistribute. Three people did. We went through the democratic process, and this is what we have.
There's questions as to whether those three people really did or not.
Can you let it go?
I'm confused by that statement, you're interrupting again. Is there someone, let's see, we are on item...
Let it heal.
Oh, Councilmember Stricula has a point?
A couple of points.
Yes, sir.
This, Vice Mayor Gilb, I appreciate you bringing up the issues with the CDC and getting that money out. That was hit from barriers from the city and issues with, with the program. They came up with a program, they pushed it forward, it was done in time, very quickly, and then hit with some pushback from the city and other interference from wherever, and I don't know where that is. But they did everything that they could, given the tools or lack thereof that we provided them. You know, so they did everything that they could there. Given a program that was like the CIC's, they would have gotten the money out just as fast. It was a much simpler, easier program, right? We complicated things with vouchers and gift cards and all this other stuff, and even messaging to small businesses who didn't understand even what they were getting because, again, we, we, as a body, convoluted it and messed it up, right? And Mayor, I think the part that you're missing here, the, the major issue, issue is that the ends don't justify the means, right? We have fractured relationships with the business community. We have accused a private organization of duplicity. We have, we have, years it will take to rebuild these relationships. On council as well, right? There were plenty of times, those issues that you mentioned with 43, there were plenty of opportunities for us to amend that, plenty of opportunities for the four that disagreed with it to amend it. And you never took it. Instead, you pushed it, you, you, you played political games. That's the problem. The ends do not justify the means.
Councilmember Stricula, if I may, respond. I don't recall anyone accusing the CDC of duplicity, although that word did come out of my mouth, and I apologized immediately.
Said it twice.
And does my apology, immediately, I misspoke, I said there was a dual purpose. I misspoke. So that one you need to let go. That I've explained ad nauseam.
No, I will not let that.
We did have opportunities to amend ordinance 43 in its original form, and I worked a lot behind the scenes to try to promote that, particularly with you on private phone calls. And it was not successful. Political games is, again, impugning motive.
Was that the phone call that you wanted to work with it, with me on it?
I spent many, 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 many minutes, I don't know how many hours, on the phone with you and dealing with...
Again, all I'm saying, the ends in this case do not justify the means.
Okay. We have some fractured relationships with the chamber, I, I have heard that, and we have fractured relationships on this council, which I don't think are new. However, you know, there is healing ahead with the small business community, and what we have been able to accomplish is good. I wish that we could have gotten all of council on board with the messaging. Ultimately, you voted unanimously for it. And there were, there were times when I had questions of the chamber, there are some records that have come up with that, with the records request, but there are issues I had with the chamber and their messaging and how they were dealing with this. And even chamber board members going so far as to promote my recall on social media while we had legislation affecting their entity on the table, that fractures relationships. And frankly, it's totally inappropriate. And so I don't know how to fix it.